For the community update. Family Bound.
Yeah.
Do we have any more?
Huh?
Do we have any more?
They were gonna jab at Kate's office.
Oh.
Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, March 3rd. This meeting is called to order. Tonight's invocation is by Elder Prince Covington of Life Bridge Church. Is he here tonight? We will have a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beckett, could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Discussion? So, in previous meetings, we have at times reduced the public comment time. Is that being proposed for tonight?
I had not proposed that. I guess that's the will of this council. If you'd like to see that. I do know that we have not had much public comment tonight on anything, but that's whatever the council would like to do.
I prefer to keep it to five minutes.
When we've had other meetings, we have reduced it to two or three minutes. We've gotten a lot of written comments, and I would entertain other people's, other city council members' thoughts of limiting it to three minutes.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would move to limit public comment to three minutes.
I'll support.
Can you do a roll call?
Of course. Arnold.
No.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
No.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
And Brown. That is three noes, four yeses. Motion carries.
Okay. So there, okay. So, all in favor of approving the agenda with three-minute public comments, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. The agenda is approved. Time for community update. Tonight, we have Jennifer Patrick from Family Bound. She's the executive director, and she will be speaking about foster care and foster families in Van Buren County. Thank you, Jennifer. It's great to have you.
Thank you so much for having me, Annie Brown. I appreciate the invitation. Council members, residents, thank you so much for having me. Well, I'm Jennifer Patrick, as she said, executive director of Family Bound. We, my husband and I actually fostered when I was single. I'm from Kalamazoo County, but we definitely enjoy South Haven. We come to the Icebreaker every winter. My father-in-law is one of your icebreaker, our ice carvers, Stan Horn. He's been an award winner for years, so we are out here every winter and summer. In any case, I began my foster care journey as a single woman and eventually met my husband, and it didn't scare him away. He actually had the same vision. We got married, birthed a child after we fostered a couple teenagers. That's interesting, isn't it? It's a new way to go about it. Here are my kids. The red-headed curly-haired kiddo is our homegrown biological kid, and the other two handsome kiddo, the other little handsome guy in the suit, he's one we adopted from foster care, as well as his sister who volunteers with me at the SBCA, and my husband's a Kalamazoo Public School teacher. So that's our family, as it is. We adopted the brother and sister from foster care. Oh, thank you. And then we had a number of my husband's students come to live with us, and I was getting my master's degree. Call us crazy. You don't have to be that crazy to be a foster parent. You really don't. And then after his four students went on, they were siblings. That was a special case. We decided to close our license and focus on the kids we had in our home, but we just, as a family, felt it was our calling to continue to not only recruit more foster families for the kids we couldn't, didn't have capacity to foster, but also to train and support foster, adoptive, and kinship families in the state of Michigan. So, the contract Family Bound has with MDHHS covers 18 counties, and my husband and I are both pre-licensed trainers, so when somebody is going through the licensing process, they have to go through 24 hours of pre-licensing training, and we both do that. We have a team of about 27 people. But tonight, I wanted to turn your focus to a few basic questions about how does this all happen? And how much time do I have? You'll have to forgive me.
Hour.
Keep going.
Is it ten? That's Kate.
What's that?
Indefinite.
Oh. I don't want to overstay my welcome. And it's a passionate, it's an area of passion for me. So, why don't you just briefly explain, why do kids enter foster care? Because there are misconceptions out there. Were the kids in trouble? Yea or nay?
If you can, the people at home can't hear you. You're gonna have to stay with the microphone.
Were the kids in trouble? Is that why they got in foster care? No. No. What happens is CPS receives a report that the kids may be experiencing abuse or neglect, and CPS then investigates the report to find out if it's substantiated, meaning that there was evidence to prove that there was abuse or neglect, or it was unsubstantiated, meaning there was not enough evidence to prove abuse or neglect. If, if the investigation shows that there was evidence of abuse or neglect, then they will remove the child from that home that evening and place them into a licensed foster home, a kinship home, which Van Buren County has many kinship placements. Not, not all of them are licensed. Many are unlicensed, which is fine. We could get into that conversation another time. Some people feel that it's best to, in their opinion, they would prefer not to be involved with the government, understandable, and then others find the benefits of getting licensed and having stipends and support and the assistance that the state offers for any licensed foster parent. Residential placement, which is a place, the facility that really treats kids with diagnoses, behavior concerns, and, and other disorders. Or they try to find an emergency shelter. At times, it might be the agency office. Kids might be sleeping on a bed in a DHHS office. In Kalamazoo, there is a paid program for kids to stay at Bronson Hospital when there are no beds in a licensed foster home in Kalamazoo County, instead of sending them out of county, or if they've tried to send them out of county to a licensed foster home, and there isn't an option for them, they go to the hospital to spend their evenings after school in a hospital bed. Can you imagine a portion of your childhood being spent at Bronson Hospital? I can't imagine that. So, they literally pay people like you or me to go there and greet the kiddo after school, help them have a snack, do homework, try to have some normalcy, and go to bed and get up and go to school the next day while the caseworkers are trying to find a foster home for them. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. So, in Michigan, this is a big scope, just to give you an idea. There are 83 counties, and as of November, we don't have our fact sheet. It's a monthly fact sheet, but I have it from November, because I haven't gotten the other three months yet. So, in November, there were 10,119 Michigan kids in foster care. There are the demographics, the ages underneath there, and then in Van Buren County, we have 40 girls and 44 male. I'm sorry, there are the, in 84 kids in Van Buren County, and there are their ages. Under five, we have 19 kids, ages five to nine, 24; 10 to 13 years old, we have 17, and 17 are 14 to 17. And then there are seven that are 18 to 20, just launching out into young adulthood. We can go to the next slide. Yep, thank you. We have 56 licensed foster homes, homes in Van Buren County, and 84 Van Buren County kids in foster care. And you might think, Jennifer, that's simple math, right? Just put, you know, one, I don't do math, to be honest with you, so I can't even figure that out. 1.25 kids in each home. But it doesn't work out that way when you're looking at sibling groups, trying to keep sibling groups together. When you've got a kiddo with a certain medically fragile condition that requires some equipment, some, some knowledge and skill from a licensed foster parent, somebody who's not squeamish, putting tubes, you know, into inserting tubes into a young'un. And then just having capacity to manage with a trauma-informed responses that you need to have. This is not traditional parenting, and I only say that to be informative and honest. Our little one, the girl that you saw, she came to us at two days old in foster care. Her brother came to us at six months with a skull injury, and you would think that he was the one that sustained the most trauma, but she, she has struggled more than he has. And I'll just leave it there, that you don't know what, what's going on inside a person's mind, spirit, body, until you're upon it. And so, when you receive a child into your home in a foster care, you have to consider, what is your capacity for the unknown, right? As, as it develops in front of you, as they feel safe and they're cared for, what might they feel comfortable disclosing to you? Might they feel comfortable disclosing some of the abuse? And then you walk with them through that? How does that impact you? Might they disclose a different gender identity or sexual orientation? Do you have capacity for that? And do you have the training that we offer you? We will cover that with you, and we will assist you with that and give you supports to go along the way. But, so the numbers, what we need to know, what we need you to know is that we need more foster homes, who can specifically catch a kiddo when the CPS workers go in and remove them from their home, and homes that are trained to meet the various needs of the kids that come into care. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. We touched on this. What happens when there aren't enough homes in Van Buren County for Van Buren County kids? You see my little arrows? They go all over the place. We're just trying to find a safe foster home for them, but think of all the things in Van Buren County they would lose out on. Right? They would lose out on, first of all, a rural setting, right? In some cases, in Van Buren County, they would miss out on the Icebreaker Festival.
I was just gonna say that.
Yep, I'm with you. I'm with you on that, Annie. They would miss out on, what else? I think we have a slide coming up. Well, those are, that was, that was out of order. My fault, not yours, of course. They would miss out on Harvest Moon Acres, where we send our foster, adoptive, and kinship families every year for free apples and pumpkins and cider and donuts. We have great partners there. Oh, go back there if you could. We love to send them to the Van Buren Youth Fair. They would miss out on that. Sure, they could go to Kalamazoo County Fair, whatever. You guys, you know you're better. And the Badger Christmas Outdoor Market. Do you know that they've partnered with us for years to provide a free Christmas tree to our foster families? Isn't that wonderful? And they post all of our signage on their wagon, their horse-drawn carriage has Raise Hope Foster Dreams, the phone numbers to call, all of the things to help us recruit more foster families. So, we want to help Van Buren County kids stay in Van Buren County, right? And be loved on by all of you and cared for. They want, we want them to stay in their school district. We want them to stay where they've been familiar, even if staying with mom and dad was maybe life-threatening. Let's get mom and dad help, right? And get these kids in a safe Van Buren County home, and then help them stay, have continuity with their faith communities, their schools, their neighborhoods. We even try to get licensed foster homes in the same ZIP code that they were removed from. Does that make sense? Okay. So, we don't want them to go from this ZIP code to that ZIP code, because then the same thing happens, which is more trauma, more change for them to have to deal with. And then when they have all that to deal with, we see behaviors, of course, right? Because they can't, they don't have the cognition yet, at this point, to explain to us what they're feeling. They're just going to behave it, right? And so, we want to bridge the gap, close the gap, so that they can stay as close as where they have been in safe foster homes. And so, there's a few things. I'll wrap up here. These are the most important things for me to say to you today, I think. There are five steps to becoming a foster parent, and I was just speaking to somebody before the meeting started about this. We have people called foster care navigators, and there is a 1-855-MISH-KIDS number. It's a statewide number. It's on all of the materials that I brought today. The statewide number, if you call that number, you'll speak to a foster care navigator on the east side, but they will connect you with one of my navigators in Region 3, our 18 counties, and specifically our Van Buren County Navigator. And that navigator will help you connect to Van Buren County DHHS, where you can schedule an orientation to meet with their licensing staff and talk about what does it look like to become a foster parent with Van Buren County DHHS. You'll complete an application, attend the free training, I love that they say it like that, which is the pre-licensing training. It's about 24 hours. We have fantastic trainers. And the training is the training I wish I'd had in 1990-something when I got licensed as a single woman. It is about seven years old, MDHHS contracted with EMU's School of Social Work, and with all the input statewide from not only foster parents, adoptive parents, relative caregivers, but also adult adoptees, kids who have, or young adults who have aged out of foster care that had a lot to say about how they think their foster parents could have done better, right? But also caseworkers, guardian ad litem, court officials, and so forth. All that input went into the training that we provide now. So I think we're doing better. And then you participate in a home evaluation. You can be licensed within about six months, or less. Then, help us recruit foster parents. If you know, mm, no, foster parenting is not for me, but I know some people, Jennifer, and I can help you recruit them. I have bags and bags of material. I even brought one of my, something to give somebody who's gonna go get their hair done this week. They can take it to their hair or nail salon and help me pass those out. I would love to come speak to your faith community, your school, your club, your ladies' book club, your men's breakfast group, whatever, or I'll send my husband to the breakfast group if you don't want me. You'd like to come. Help us distribute the material, and then support a local foster family or an adoptive family and the kids in their care. We can connect you to Van Buren County DHHS. Let them know you'd like to volunteer, and then they, of course, will give you a background check, et cetera, and then they can find a foster family in the area that would love to, maybe you want to help tutor, maybe you want to help with, you know, everybody gets home from school a couple hours before dinnertime, or maybe just one weekend a month, you go over and let foster mom and foster dad go have a date. Marriages are under strain with all those things going on in a normal family, right? So, all of those things, I would love to, I don't know what your process is. I know when I'm done presenting, I was told I can leave, but if there are a couple minutes to distribute my bags, I would love to do that.
I was gonna have, see if our city council members have any questions for you.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Any questions? Wendy.
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this to our attention and everything you do for the kids in our community. So, not a question, but just a note of gratitude.
Thank you. I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, and actually, if you leave it there, our clerk can pass it out later.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Annie. Appreciate you.
Next, it is time for a public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for a public hearing. And you have three minutes. This, this is not a time for comments about short-term rentals, because we have a public hearing coming up, and you can talk then. So, any other comments are fine. If there are no comments, we can move on. The consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through E?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
I, I just have a couple questions, Kate, because I didn't have a chance to talk with you on items D and E. If we could have a short discussion afterwards, after this, hopefully it wouldn't take very long.
We can, we can move them to a different part of the agenda.
Well, it shouldn't take very long at all.
The procedure is you ask to have it removed.
And it says that it, if a discussion is required regarding an item, the item will be removed and considered separately. It doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be moved separately to a different part.
Is there a motion to remove D and E?
You don't need a motion. It can be done just by the simple request of one person without a second.
Okay. We will remove D and E to, um, let me see. How about? Let's do 11A. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C?
I move to approve agenda items 8, A through C.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next in new business, number nine, the city council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. A, Special Event 2025-09 Worship on the River Walk 2025, to be held on July 13th, 20th, and 27th, from 7:00 to 8:15 PM at Riverfront Park. B, Special Event 2025-10 St. Basil Catholic School 5K Walk and Run, to be held on April 26, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, beginning and ending at St. Basil's. And C, Special Event 2025-11 Moving in the Park, to be held on June 28, 2025, from 8:00 PM to midnight at Elkenberg Park.
I'll move to approve Special Event 2025-09 Worship on the River Walk 2025, as read by the mayor. Special Event 2025-10 St. Basil Catholic School 5K Walk Run, as read by the mayor. And Special Event 2025-11 Moving in the Park, as read by the mayor.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the events are approved. Number 10, the city council will be asked to consider accepting a donation of two beach-accessible wheelchairs from the South Haven Visitors Bureau. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a donation that's coming from the CVB. One is for a manual beach wheel, accessible wheelchair, and the other one is a track chair that has more mobility, so it's not pushing through the sand. It's got a, it's got a motor on it. This was reviewed by the Parks Commission, who I like the idea of having more accessibility on our beaches. This is contemplating that both of these would be located at this time at the South Beach. There is to be a shed and a pad placed adjacent to the pump house on the South Beach. At least that's what the, what the recommendation is at this time.
Okay. And do we have, do you want Scott to come up, or Jennifer?
If council has any, you know, questions, we can have them come on up.
Okay. Jennifer. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. Yes, we went to the Parks Commission a while back and spoke about this, but just to give a little bit of background for you all and for maybe some folks that are here that don't understand how we got here. We're the South Haven Van Buren County Convention and Visitors Bureau. We are primarily here to market and provide destination development for the area. We're responsible for a lot of destination development projects in the area, which include the renovations of the restrooms. The DDA funded that. We gifted that property to the DDA. We, we're responsible for a lot of recreation plans, the Van Buren County Rec Plan. We're responsible for Black River Maintenance, things like that. So this just aligns with a lot of the destination development things that we do. To kind of point out, we are funded by lodging. We're funded by hotels, motels, resorts, and our primary funding is short-term rentals that help us be able to do the things that we do. And so, one of the big things that we wanted to tackle this year is accessibility, right? So, South Haven had, according to our Placer data, so we keep track of a lot of data, and Placer told us that there were 2.6 million visitors in South Haven in 2024, and according to the U.S. Department of Transportation, 6% of Americans reported that travel-limiting disabilities kept them from going to our beaches, which equates to about 158,000 people that were unable to go to our beaches. So we felt like it was really important for us to initiate this effort to make sure that everybody has access to the beach. If you break that down, South Beach saw about 184,000 people last year, which also means about 11,000 people at the South Beach were not able to get to the beach. One of the things that we noticed was a lot of our friends along the lake shore have these features. Grand Haven, Luddington, Holland, New Buffalo, all of those places have, have these beach wheelchairs. And so, this is where we wanted to start. Of course, we'd love to see them all over our beaches if we can. To kind of break down some of the facilitation, you know, there's no cost to the city. We would love to just give this to the city. We have an annual maintenance plan with a vendor, which is really great, so they'll come and check things out. We've partnered with Soha Surf Shop. So if you've been down to South Beach, and they rent their kayaks and their paddleboards and all of those things, so Chris Campbell has been very generous and will facilitate that at no cost, so it'll be just part of their reservation system for, for us. We've got a storage shed that'll be on South Beach that the CVB will pay for as well. We've got about a six-to-eight week lead time, so we'd love to have this before the summer, if you all will allow us to give you this gift. And just one thing to note is that this is part of a really broader accessibility program that we're working on. You know, I talk about destination development, and every year, we have lots of priorities. And so this year, you know, we've added a grant program. So, our nonprofits that are here in town that want to help serve our mission, we're offering up a grant program for them. It's a $5,000 grant that matches dollar for dollar, anybody that really wants to help us in this citywide initiative to bring accessibility to our residents and to our guests that come here. So, tonight, that's really what, what we're here for, and I hope that you will accept this gift, and I hope that you will continue to support our funding, because that's what helps us do what we do. So, thank you, Annie.
Thank you so much for your generosity. This is just really amazing, so.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and I can't emphasize enough, I really, really hope that you just continue to support our funding. It is a very big concern of ours. As I mentioned, our funding comes from lodging, and it comes from all facets of lodging, and I just, we really want to continue this work, so I hope that you'll accept this gift and continue to support our funding.
Does anyone have questions for Jen? Wendy.
I just wanted to thank the Visitors Bureau and also Soha Surf Shop for making this happen. I know when I was on Parks Commission, before I was on council, we had talked about that before in trying to make beaches accessible in our city, and I just appreciate that you guys got the gumption to do it and are gonna have it hopefully for the summer.
Happy to do it.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
There are probably more for Kate than Jen, other than echoing Wendy's compliments. So I know that access to the beach and beach wheelchairs have been discussed for a few years now, so I'm thrilled to see it happening. Kate, my question is, do we need to formalize the agreement with expenses and liabilities and things like that? I think, I'll just leave it open-ended like that.
I think at this point, you're accepting the gift, and how it's deployed, we can work on an agreement that would later come to this council. But if the council believes they're going to accept the donation, and it takes some lead time, then maybe they need to accept the donation. If there needs to be a further discussion with liability, we can have that with legal counsel and come back to the spot.
Thank you.
Would that involve then accepting the gift with staff working, with legal counsel, to execute any necessary agreements to make it happen consistent with the donation being offered?
If that's how you'd like to work the motion, that would be acceptable.
I would like to add, too, that we had had discussions about the CVB covering any incremental costs regarding liability or anything like that. So we're happy to have that discussion. Really, we just wanted to get this off the ground this year, and at the end of the summer, we'll go back and assess what those costs are as far as, you know, utilities, liabilities, things like that. You know, we talked to the vendor, and they said that it costs approximately a dollar a day for electricity. Again, we're happy to have those conversations. We don't want the city to have to incur any of those costs, so hopefully.
And I forgot to applaud you. The presentation material was excellent. It was so detailed. I really appreciated it.
Well, thank you. I have to give Scott credit for that. He's sitting over there. He put that together. We worked on that together, so thank you.
And that's why I had my questions. So I wasn't sure if that would be part, if we would accept that as provided and execute any necessary documents.
Dave, do you have anything you'd like to weigh in on?
Sure. I think the best thing for council to do at this point is, I'm admittedly somewhat very unfamiliar with this issue, but to say, look, we intend to move forward with accepting the donation. However, that's going to be subject to some agreement between us and the Visitors Bureau. So with that context, staff, please move forward and bring us an agreement which will effectuate the acceptance of the gift and wrap up all the other issues like Councilmember Hosley was referring to.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the donation?
I would move to accept the donation and execute any necessary documents to formalize the donation presented. Is that good?
If I may?
Go ahead.
Move to instruct staff to move forward to prepare a draft agreement under which the city would accept the donation and address any other related issues for council's approval at a later date.
I move to accept the donation and instruct staff to move forward to draft any documents necessary to accept the gift and any ancillary matters. Is that good?
But we wouldn't be accepting the gift till we sign on the dotted line.
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you so much. Moving on, the city council will be asked to approve Resolution 2025-11, a resolution of support for a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application by the South Haven Area Recreation Authority for the Riverwoods property. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of support for a Michigan Natural Trust Fund's grant application that would be put in by the South Haven Area Rec Authority for the Riverwoods property. I know that Scott Reiner is here and has maybe more information as to what this would be used for. If Scott wanted to come on up, I know that Chara is being very aggressive and looking at different funding options, and this would not compel the city to put any dollars towards the project, but would really just be a voice in support.
Yeah, thank you, Kate. So we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes on Riverwoods. I think you all are aware that Chara intends to purchase that property as a recreational site. Everything has been done with the DNR as far as formal approval. The only thing we're waiting on right now is an appraisal cost. Because of the deed restrictions that are being placed on the property in perpetuity, Chara is going to be able to buy the property at 25% of the fair market value, which is a great thing. So we've been doing a lot of work. A lot of you all and community members have been involved. We've developed a master plan for the site, which will include pickleball courts, pavilion. We're intending to reinstall a portion of the Nichols Covered Bridge on land, dog park, lots and lots of trails, miles of trails. And so anyway, we're very excited about that. We are expecting by March the 12th, the DNR will have that appraisal back, at which time Chara will be able to determine our funding strategy based upon the purchase price. Separately, however, we have been working on developing a funding strategy to develop the site. And we anticipate to develop the site the way we anticipate, the way we hope, is going to be in the multimillion-dollar range, probably three to four million dollars at least to develop that. So we are anticipating reaching out to the community, trying to get a fundraising effort going to develop that park. But in the meantime, the DNR has grant programs that are available for us to get started. So the reason I'm before you now and the reason we're pushing this is because applications are due by April 1st of every year. So if we miss the April 1st window, we'd have to wait another year. And if we are accepted for this grant, we would have the funds available probably in mid-2026. So we're talking next year to actually have the funds. So we're asking basically the municipalities, other impacted organizations to help basically show support for this project. We are going to be starting with the boardwalk. Many of you have seen that over the years. That was built in 2007, so it's been almost 18 years it's been in existence. If you've been out there on the trail, you know it. It is a mess. The condition is a mess, deteriorated. So it basically has to be rebuilt. And if Chara assumes responsibility for that site, we'd also assume the liability. And so we think this is an urgent priority to get this done. We hope the pilings that support the boardwalk structure and pavilion are actually steel, so we're hoping we're going to be inspecting those with engineers this week. We're hoping that we can reuse those pilings. If so, we can get a lot more done. So we're going to be, everything will be fully ADA accessible, fishing piers, kayak launch, upgrading the pavilion that's out there, birdwatching stations and so forth. So we've hired Edgewater Resources to develop not only the site plan, but also the grant application to put that in place. So we intend to have this. The CVB has, you know, part of Jen and the CVB's commitment, they have provided a $100,000 match for next year. We're applying for $400,000 grant, so a half million dollars we'll have this year. And I should also note, the CVB has committed $100,000 to Riverwoods this year to be able to install the Nichols Bridge on land. And so we intend to get that done this year as soon as we purchase the property. So this basically gets us started. It allows us to kind of still get that grant cycle window, so we don't have to lose a whole nother year in the development of the process. A group of community members met separately and talked about the fundraising approach. We intend to have a community-wide corporate and community fundraising effort, and we hope to get that done by the end of this year. And whatever monies we've collected, we'll use in 2026 to develop the site. So we're very excited about the plans. We think it's going to be a great recreational asset. As Kate mentioned, we're not asking for any money or commitment from the city other than to support our efforts moving forward. And one final commitment or comment I wanted to make, because I know obviously the intent of, the original intent of this property was as a residential development. And obviously, that went, you know, with the crisis of 2007, 2008, the property went bankrupt. It was purchased by the DNR with the intent of doing some kind of alternate lodging or camping, whichever came to fruition. But several folks have reached out to me, and I know some of you, and asked the question, can it be used for affordable housing, which we know is a key thing? And the answer to that is no, unfortunately. We've spent a lot of time with the DNR going back and forth with this. I'll just read you their language that the DNR has sent to me that will be included with the deed that basically says the property can only be owned by a governmental agency, and that only buildings that primarily support outdoor public creation uses are allowable. Subject to a reverter, that if the property ceases to be used for outdoor public creation uses, the property shall revert to the state, subject to the state's discretion. So unfortunately, it's not an opportunity for us to address the affordable housing issue, but it is an incredible opportunity for us to bring some recreational opportunities to the area. So anyway, just asking for your support. That would be in form of the resolution that we conclude with the grant application to support the funding, so.
Does anyone have questions for Scott? Joe?
Yeah, I'm on that committee, and I've seen some of the initial plans, and they look great. And I think it'll be a great addition for the community, both the trails, the pickleball, everything there. It's just going to be a great area. And the nice thing is, it's so close to the downtown.
Right. Yeah, thank you, Jill. Thank you for being a part of it.
Any other questions?
Mention pickleball, you've got Joe. I would move to approve Resolution 2025-12, noting the typo there, a resolution of support for the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund grant application by the South Haven Area Recreational Authority for Riverwoods property.
Second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Brown. If I could just, one, not related but unrelated topic, I just wanted to let you know also that the efforts around the Community Recreation Director position have been very, very active and ongoing. We've had, can't tell you how many meetings between Chara, city staff, and the public school system. We'll be going to the school board meetings in the coming weeks, and we hope to come back to council within the next month or so with our recommendations and plans.
Great, great. Thank you. Next, we're at items
11A.
that were removed from the consent agenda. Item D and E. Mary?
Yes. So let me just look at them. It'll be easier. So I know the amount of money that DDA and the marinas contribute. I was just wondering, how is that hitting our budget? I mean, I know you say it's going to the IT reserve funds, but how, what is, because they contribute annually, how much is there and how much is going, being taken out of the reserves for our IT fund?
So the, so this is about the North Marina Fiber Optic Project.
Yep.
And then the cost is $42,776.35. That is coming out of the IT reserves, which has an internal service fund. That is something that is paid in by every fund that needs IT services. So this is coming out of the IT service fund, fund balance, and this is a cost that is not coming to the general fund.
No, but, so it's all coming out of the IT fund? So the fact that the marinas and DDA pay, do they pay towards the fund? Is that what the IT fund is for?
The IT is an internal service fund. That means that any fund that needs IT support pays into that. So both the DDA and the marinas and Black River Park pay into the IT service fund.
Got it. Okay. And then for the Dyckman Bridge, I was just, is that in our budget or is this in addition to what's been budgeted?
I'd have to go back and talk to Dana. I know that we did budget for some things because I know we have a scouring project. This would be for the next year's budget because this would occur in September of 2025.
Okay.
So this would be something that will be budgeted in that, but because we have to get contracts locked in, we're looking to get this approved now.
Got it. Super. Thanks.
Is there a motion to approve items D and E?
I move to approve items D and E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to consider taking the following actions regarding the draft STR regulatory ordinance prepared by the Short-Term Rental Work Group. And we have a need for a public hearing. Is there a motion?
First, we were going to get.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kate.
If I may, kind of recap, we had a special meeting earlier today, and we got done with our closed session and came back out and had some discussion on this, on the proposed ordinance that's in the seven o'clock session. I do want to kind of, kind of maybe distill some of our discussion for those that may not have been here, is that council had raised some concerns with some changes in the STR draft, one of which being the addition of the bathroom language. And it seems to me, and I think George did a stellar job of recapping our discussion, is that there seems to be some agreement on council that there, the language that was in the 217 draft that the council reviewed may be looked at with some modifications. So if I understand correctly, there seems to be some willingness on council to consider a occupancy formula, if you will, of two occupants per bedroom, up to two occupants per finished floor with proper egress to not exceed a maximum of 12 occupants, if that's what I kind of wrote down in a very concise way. Does that comport with what your understanding is, George?
So.
Yes.
So based on what I had proposed that George summarized, it is two per compliant bedroom and up to two per finished floor, with the understanding that the additional occupants would be in compliant bedrooms.
First, I think we should open our public hearing first.
Well, so I think that's, I think there is some ways to discern that with further discussion. I just, prior to all these fine folks coming on up, there may be some things to kind of clarify with them. So I wanted to kind of throw that out there prior to the public hearing and you all hearing about bathrooms, when I don't think anybody here wants to hear about bathrooms. So if I may, just have a better use of your time. And then, Dave, did you have anything to add?
Yeah. After the, you know, during the meeting, council had asked that, kind of noodle, to use Kate's word, noodle on some options. And in the 15 minutes we were on break, I think I thought of a way to break it down that will not only facilitate council's discussion, but better facilitate input from the public. If we look at, and again, this is just a way to think about it. If we look at occupancy based off three factors, two of those factors are what we can call internal looking in terms of the safe occupancy of the dwelling. And the third factor takes into account the recognized second and third, the recognized effects of occupancy of that dwelling on the surrounding neighborhood, on neighbors, on parking, on things like that. So obviously, we're deleting the bathroom section. I think council's been pretty clear on that. But if we worded something along the lines of maximum permissible occupancy may not exceed the number of occupants permitted for all bedrooms within the dwelling. Now, remember, there's, the draft talks about what's a compliant bedroom, and if you have more than, if you have two occupants in a bedroom, it's got to be 100 square feet. If you'd have three, it would have to be 150 square feet, et cetera. There's 50 square feet per occupant. So we have, if we say that is, that's our bedroom regulation. You can't, if we're looking at the permissible occupancy of a bedroom, not, and I'll explain why I'm not capping it like council discussed. Plus, looking at, do we want to allow what we can call common area sleeping, like the sleeper couch or whatnot, provided there's acceptable sleeping facilities and egress? This kind of, this is analogous to the, are we going to throw in one per floor or two per floor or what have you? So those are the two internal ones, looking at the safe occupancy of the structure. And then pursuant to council's discussion, those, that number would be subject to a cap, whatever number council decides. But the justification for that cap would be, hey, we recognize that as occupancy goes up, as Councilmember Williams said, it feels kind of like you're living next to a hotel the more people there are.
Wilkins.
Wilkins, I'm sorry. So, and we recognize that, and we're trying to bring the number of total occupants down in recognition of the fact that, of the fact that the occupancy, the effects of the occupancy of that dwelling, of that short-term rental, has on the neighborhood. So to reiterate, one, maximum occupancy permitted in the bedrooms under the ordinance, because we, council's entertaining a hard cap, because council's entertaining a hard cap, I don't think you really have to say two per a bedroom. It's going to be, can it safely be occupied based off the factors you've laid out in the ordinance? Plus, do you want to allow an occupant or two per a floor? This is kind of like the sleeper sofa concept, provided there's egress and adequate sleeping facilities. Those two, look at safe occupancy of the structure. And then third, structure. And then third, all that, subject to a cap of X. That takes into account the effect that the occupancy has on the surrounding neighborhood. Is that, and again, we, you can fill in those numbers however you want, but I think if we think about it that way, it not only facilitates council's conversation, but also helps the public direct their comments in a manner that allows council to really dig into each of those three issues.
I really wanna start the public hearing to hear from the people in the audience. So is there a motion to open a public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We're now in a public hearing?
And the time is limited at three?
Five minutes.
Three.
We voted for three.
Three.
That was for everything?
Yes.
John Lorstorff, 23 Delaware. I'm a retired municipal attorney, as many of you know. I practiced in the field for thirty-four years, twenty-nine with township governments in the state of Michigan, did a lot of work on ordinances, drafting, enforcing, and also on zoning. I appreciate the council's addressing occupancy and I really support what you're doing on the occupancy. When I was here two weeks ago, there was some confusion about vested rights. If you're a short-term rental owner, you have a vested right in the use of that property under zoning. And I believe some of that's being addressed here, but it'll be addressed, you know, in your zoning ordinance. However, occupancy is not a vested right. That's under your general ordinance, what you're doing tonight. No one has vested rights in the general ordinance. So for instance, if you have a decibel rating for your noise ordinance, it's not working and you decide to change it, a person can't come back and say, well gee, under the old ordinance, I did this for ten years, I'm vested. No, you're not. You've made changes because something has occurred and the council has addressed it. So there aren't any vested rights in occupancy. The second thing I would point out is that there are many cases in your ordinance where you use the word "may", such as in fourteen five oh six. A rental inspector may issue a notice, they may issue a violation, and so on. That doesn't give you, that's too much wiggle room. A "shall" is mandatory. I would think that you'd want the inspector, if finding a violation, shall issue a notice or shall issue a citation. And frequently, I saw that in there and I think you really want mandatory. You don't wanna have somebody come out and say there's a violation, but you know what, I don't have to do anything. I may issue a citation. I think those are the things that need to be addressed in there. And finally, I support the overlay that the council will be considering too, especially as it addresses our single-family neighborhoods, because we are pretty much saturated with the short-term rentals and they've had a huge impact on the neighborhoods. And as the attorney said, I think that's one of the reasons why you're addressing occupancy. Thank you.
Next.
Michael Beederman, Seventy North Shore Drive, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did have a fully drafted speech, but I have three minutes, so I'm gonna ad lib. I sat in the back for the meeting, the special meeting before this meeting, thinking that I was gonna study my speech and try to be better prepared, but I listened. And I was amazed. I think we all have to listen a little bit more. I think that my perception, and again, everything's based on perception, is that we're using a rental ordinance as a tool, as an instrument, under the premise of life safety, under the premise of having our children be able to exit a bunk bedroom safely. But the reality is, is we just don't feel comfortable, some of us, with short-term rentals in our backyard. We don't like the height or the massing or the fact that they're non-contextual. It makes us uncomfortable, some of us, right? And it's interesting, because if you think about that, where does that theory end? Where does that thinking end? Maybe I just don't like greenhouses, or maybe I'm a firm believer in historic architecture and preservation in South Haven specifically, but I don't want modern architecture on my street. I don't want glass and steel. So maybe we should write an ordinance about that, too. Where does it end? When does it stop? We have codes for building safety and life safety. We have those in place. Lastly, I'll close with this. I was talking to my wife. I've owned our home for a long time, many years. I've been coming here for fifty-nine years. I'm not a registered voter, by the way, unfortunately. I will be soon. I live next to, thank you for the one-minute warning. I, I live next to the Sunset Inn on North Shore Drive. It's a hotel. Never once have I had a problem with Charlie, the owner, who's an excellent neighbor, and I know him for fifty-some years, never had a problem. Single-family residential, right next to a commercial use, that's been there for longer than I've been alive, never had a problem with Charlie or his guests. He had a problem with my children, quite frankly. I went over and apologized. That was it. We shook hands. It was done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can we, yeah. No applause. Let's keep this running quickly.
All right. Good evening, everybody. This letter is from a local business owner who asked me to read this tonight. I'm not sure if you guys, she's on vacation. They went with the family tonight. But this is from Carla Rupert, so I'll read this real quick for you. "I am a business owner of three businesses on Phoenix Street in downtown South Haven and have been a storekeeper here for twenty-seven years." By the way, I tried to read this, I forgot my readers, so. "Over the years, I have weathered many challenges, from harsh winters that required borrowing money from the bank to get by, to adapting to the rise in online shopping, and dealing with slower seasons and pandemic and temporarily shut down commerce. Through it all, I've also had the privilege of experiencing our town lively and prosperous summers filled with both locals and visitors. My family and I have deep roots in South Haven. My children work downtown, my husband owns Blueberry Farms in the area, and simply put, we are deeply invested in this community and I cannot imagine calling any other place home. That's why it's incredibly difficult for me to understand the animosity that some of you have towards very visitors who help sustain our local businesses and economy. The proposals and mandates being discussed seem frankly like an attack on the very essence that what makes South Haven thrive. It saddens me to see such negativity towards those who enjoy and love our beautiful region. I prayed for understanding and reflection on this issue, and it's hard for me to grasp what fuels the antagonism towards tourists. I wondered, do we not want to share our beautiful shoreline? It's disheartening to witness such divisive rhetoric over the past year, and I find myself questioning why some of you choose to take public service in the first place if it is how you feel about our community's heart and soul, it's people, both local and visiting, that make it. My personal motto has always been, do what you love and love what you do. And I can't help but ask, if you have so much disdain for our town and businesses, why have you taken up this responsibility?"
You have one minute.
"Shouldn't those who are passionate about South Haven and its prosperity be the ones in these positions? It should be an honor to help our community flourish, not something that's tainted by fear, division, and negativity. I truly know, if we truly know better, then we must strive to do better. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Carla Rupert." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roxanne Leader. Thank you for letting me speak today. I obviously own and run Decadent Dogs, where it is all about the dog with a little kitty cat corner. So, I'm going to second what the other two people have said. I've been in South Haven as property owner since nineteen eighty-two. And in nineteen eighty-two, when I purchased my little house on Superior Street, one block away from Lake Michigan, it was shabby little place and I was surrounded there by shabby places. In the seventies and the eighties, manufacturing had left this town and had left this town in a bit of disarray. Since that time, great improvements have occurred in South Haven. I currently don't live in the five-hundred-square-foot house, but I am delighted to see the beautiful homes and the increase in property values that have come. Now, what's, what's changed from nineteen eighty-two to today? I, I will say that this city re-embraced tourism as something that they could count on to build this community. So I think sometimes locals like to say that tourism is bad.
You have one minute.
Oh, I need more. I have so much to say. But I, I beg to differ. When locals say, oh, downtown, it's so busy with all those tourists. You know, I have people that drive to work to my store and they always find parking. But what does tourism bring? Jobs. A small retail store like mine, I employ four people year-round and that balloon stay eight in the summer. Those are, are jobs, community support. We are constantly giving to the nonprofits that need our money. Where does that money come from? It's coming a lot from tourism dollars. We're giving it back. I've given to so many nonprofits. I'll say sixty, let's bump it to a hundred.
I'm sorry.
Well, I need two times.
Thank you.
So, let me pass out. I've passed this to you before.
Thank you, Roxanne.
This is the numbers of restaurants that we locals benefit from.
Next. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I can't talk faster.
Thank you. You can go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ashley Gray. I live at forty-two Delaware Court. I'm a resident of Ward One in the city of South Haven. I'm owner of Lake Michigan Linen Services. I currently employ ten year-round employees and I have an additional twenty employees that I bring on in the summer months. At the February seventeenth council meeting, it was stated that STR owners would not be harmed because they could keep their permitted use, and I strongly disagree. The proposed changes will have a significant impact, not just on STR owners, but on local businesses, like you've heard here tonight, employees, and the overall economy. Before stating numbers and statistics, I think it's important to note that I have seen notes of proposed modifications to this ordinance passed around over the weekend with no clear path for who's writing these changes or what will be discussed tonight. These are people's livelihoods we're talking about and the lack of clarity and direction is deeply disturbing. I've received calls and emails letting me know that some homes are completely unviable as rentals going forward with these new rules. Currently, ninety-seven percent of our STR homes will be affected by this ordinance, leading to a thirty-four percent reduction in occupancy. For example, a four-bedroom home that once accommodated a multi-generational family that's come here year after year will no longer be able to house the same group due to the new occupancy restrictions. As a result, many of these homeowners will no longer be able to afford their properties. This will only exasperate the existing problem. Out of all of the housing stock in the city of South Haven, only sixteen percent are short-term rentals, thirty-five percent are primary residents, and forty-nine percent of the South Haven housing stock are second homeowners. Those are not short-term rentals, and those homes remain vacant typically between October and April. This ordinance will accelerate the transformation of South Haven into a seasonal ghost town. The impact on businesses, including my own, is staggering. Nearly eighty percent of my revenue comes from servicing STRs. Even assuming some rentals can still operate under these new restrictions, it could force me to lay off at least four of my employees. For the broader business community, the numbers are even more alarming. This drop in STR occupancy would result in an estimated twelve million dollars in lost annual spending in South Haven. It could lead up to a loss of a hundred and forty-six jobs.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Supporting industries such as landscaping, cleaning, and maintenance could see an additional forty-two job losses. I understand that some people are concerned about congestion, restaurant availability, but imposing these drastic restrictions, you are not just reducing the number of visitors, you are jeopardizing businesses, eliminating jobs, and stripping South Haven of its vibrancy. Restaurants will close, families will move away, and the economic foundation of our town will erode. I'm sure you're aware that removing occupancy from these homes and severely impacting their financial stability will inevitably lead to lawsuits. Financial implications could range from the tens to hundreds of millions of dollars and costs to our community, not only in funds, but in tying up valuable time and resources of our staff and volunteers that would be far better spent supporting our city in more productive ways. I urge you to grandfather in existing short-term rentals that have operated responsibly and allow them to maintain their longstanding occupancy levels. Moving forward, you can adjust regulations.
Your time is up.
But please don't penalize those that have followed the rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Regan Gibson. I'm an attorney at Varnum in Grand Rapids and I'm here representing the South Haven Property Rights Coalition, many of whom are here in the audience tonight and who you're going to hear from. We sent the council and their, and the city attorney a letter in advance of this meeting. I'm not going to repeat what we wrote in that letter, but I'd urge you to consider our arguments, especially given the limited time. We've previously requested a meeting to work with the city to work out what is an ordinance that can help the city accomplish its goals, but also protect the existing short-term rental owners. We, that meeting request was declined. You've been, the city has been warned repeatedly that if the council goes forward with these new ordinances as they are currently drafted, there will be litigation, that we will be filing to protect our, my client's vested rights and the vested rights of all the other STR owners. This includes, likely includes litigation that will be over the actual validity of the ordinance itself, which will not be covered, most likely, by the city's insurance. That means the taxpayers, the people sitting here tonight, are going to be the ones who bear that cost. Further, there, that is putting aside all the individual owner suits for damages for the loss of their property. You heard from other speakers already that some of the short-term rentals will not be viable under the new occupancy restrictions. I appreciate that prior to this meeting, the council was discussing adjustments to what's written in the draft ordinance today. I would urge the council to, in fact, adopt the version that allows for the additional two persons on each floor in addition to the compliant bedrooms, as well as avoiding the twelve-person cap. Excuse me. We heard from a former attorney a little while ago about the difference between vested rights and the rights in the zoning, in the regulatory ordinance itself, and I want to address that. You've repeatedly heard from your council, former attorneys, you've heard it from me in writing, as well as my partners, that legally non-conforming uses are, should
be. One minute.
Thank you. Legally non-conforming uses are guaranteed the ability to operate by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. What the council appears to be trying to do, and has been stated in prior council meetings, is arbitrarily and capriciously limit those rights with a workaround via a police power ordinance to avoid the compliance with the Zoning Enabling Act. That is illegal. This council cannot regulate land uses via a police power ordinance. I'm not putting aside the example that was given about a noise ordinance, the occupancy is directly tied to the vested right in the land use itself. If they can no longer operate as a short-term rental under the new restrictions, that means they no longer have a vested right and the council has been able to achieve what appears to be the goal of a very vocal minority of its citizens. In addition to the occupancy cap, I want to briefly discuss, because I know I have very limited time, the zoning compliance determination as it stands right now.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rich Green, four oh eight Eagle Street, Shores Vacation Rentals. And I want to tell you that, you know, we are a paid member of SHIVRA. And we are, if SHIVRA moves forward, I want to let you know that our fifty-six owners that are here in downtown will join that fight. Now, with that said, I want to talk about the financial stability here in America right now. The Dow Jones today is seven hundred and fifty points lower. Tomorrow's tariffs are affecting agricultural prices and imports on food in America, which is going to drive our prices higher. And at a time of economic instability in America, you are going to kneecap your business owners, your homeowners and your residents? You guys all know that your economic plan, your study, shows you how much money You guys all know that your economic plan, your study, shows you how much money that they brought in here. But every time I've come up to this podium, you guys look at me when I bring that report up, and you just kind of glaze over. I don't know what you're talking about, Mr. Green. And I doubt most of you call me Mr. Green. But who is this actually hurting? This is going to hurt those businesses. This is going to hurt your neighbors. This is going to hurt your residents. There's unintended consequences to this, of course. You say this is about affordable housing, but it won't create one single affordable home here in South Haven. Reducing STRs does not magically make South Haven more affordable. These homes are not going to be rented out to long-term residents. Most will become second homes and sitting empty for most of the year. Instead of helping the middle-class families, this is only going to punish them and push them even further out of town. You say it's about protecting neighborhoods, but what happens when that money disappears? Again, STRs pour over 12 million a year into this economy. That's just the STRs alone. Your report stated such things. It also stated that those people who are renting out those STRs are bringing in anywhere from 35 to 55 million.
You have one minute.
This economy. There is a better way forward, and that is the middle ground, as we have preached this several times at this podium to all of you. We all care about South Haven's future, and we all want balance, but drastic reactionary policies are not the way to get there. We should be talking about real solutions. Councilman Wilkins, you called me out on the last meeting. You said, "Put my money where my mouth is." And I'm going to tell you, I'm inviting all of you. Here is where I'm putting my money down. We have ideas for pocket neighborhoods. We have initiatives for rental assistant funds, and first-time homeowner buyer supports, all through collecting money through renting out STRs. But kneecap us, and you will all be to blame for what happens to this economy. And I hope you can look at all the business owners out here in all the neighborhoods and say, "Yeah, it doesn't bother me a bit. It's not my job."
Your time is up. Thank you.
Heather Winter, 721 Woodland Circle. I'd like to speak on behalf of many of the homeowners in the Harbor Club Resort. I'd like to express my deep concerns regarding the proposed short-term rental ordinances aimed at reducing occupancy as a way of limiting the number of short-term rentals in our community. While I understand the desire to address concerns from a select group of residents, these measures will have long-term economic consequences that will harm South Haven instead of help it. Short-term rentals are a cornerstone of South Haven's tourism-driven economy. Visitors who choose to stay in these properties not only contribute directly through rental taxes, but also spend money at local businesses, restaurants, and attractions. By restricting occupancy and forcing rental owners out of the market, the city risks losing their most significant source of revenue, which is their taxes. These taxes help maintain public schools and services, infrastructure, and local programs. We ourselves pay taxes twice, one for our home and one for our rental home, our rental home at a higher rate. If this revenue disappears, the burden will ultimately fall on full-time residents through their higher taxes. Furthermore, limiting short-term rentals will not solve the issue of affordable housing. The data does not support this notion, as many here have said today. A more balanced solution would be to look at what you have been discussing. And I am not going to ad lib, but it does sound like you are starting to think maybe limiting quite as much as you originally said, maybe you're taking a step back. I appreciate that. Allow me to just give a few practical examples of how proposed language would hurt. We have a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath. Presently, we are legally allowed 10 guests. We have room for eight to sleep comfortably, and typically, that's what we have. We rarely go over that number. If we do, it's mainly just children. This Friday, we had someone inquire about renting our home for a weekend getaway arriving that day, mom, dad, and their five children. They mentioned wanting to get away and how much they love South Haven and the restaurants we have. They especially mentioned Clementines and their onion rings.
You have one minute.
Thank you. They also mentioned that they want to come back this summer. If this new policy were to pass, this family would not have been able to stay at our home. They'd be one over. We have a king bedroom, a queen bedroom, and a bunk room with a full bed and a bunk bed. This accommodates families very well. We have eight beds that are comfortably slept in by our guests. Our guests coming next week are two couples with combined three children. Again, our setup works perfectly, but the new policy, as it was stated, maybe not now, would prohibit them from staying. What happens if a family or group of six come with an infant who sleeps in a pack-and-play or crib? This new policy would also prohibit their stay. Consider infants. We diligently follow the rules of our neighborhood and noise ordinances and parking. We have extra overflow parking that we often share with our local neighbors. South Haven is beloved by visitors from all over, and its charm is a key reason why people continue to return year after year. South Haven must have one of the best tax bases in the state with what they bring in. Allow this tax base, these homes.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah McHugh. I live at 429 Superior Street. I actually called 12 different bed-and-breakfasts, hotels, and motels today, and I asked them specifically, "How many rooms do you have available?" And the total came to 469 rooms. So with the change in the occupancy, right now, there are 7,756, affecting 95%. That would only bring it to 5,200 rooms available. Yet, as you just heard from the CVB, we have over 2 million people that come to visit. So where's anybody going to stay? They're not. They're going to leave. In the example of occupancy, we too have a bunk bedroom. We have this scenario, and I know we are not the only one. A grandma, a grandpa, a son, a daughter-in-law with a couple of kids, a daughter and a son-in-law with three kids, that's 11 people. That would require six bedrooms. My home is no longer available to rent. Families want to stay together. That's why they come here. They want to enjoy time together to the beach, and they want to enjoy our activities. But because you want to eliminate occupancy, now, where do they go? What are they going to do? We have plenty of parking. All of my neighbors, I've never had one complaint, and we follow all the rules of licensing. Yet, now you want to take that away. I also want to bring up the lovely hotline that was put into play 14 months ago, December 1 of '23. There's been a grand total of 46 complaints. 26 of those are parking-related, primarily due to gas parking over sidewalks. And I will note, when my husband and I walk into town to the Elks, my neighbors, who are full-time residents, they park over the sidewalk all the time. So this isn't just a short-term rental thing. But what I want to prove my point is that there is a core group of people that are the problem.
One minute.
And here's how I'm going to prove it. 57% of the complaints from that hotline came from one person. One person. So out of all of these short-term rentals, you had one person file 57% of the complaints. I urge you to reconsider. This is not a balance. This is an erosion of our rights on purpose. It's designed to harm and damage more than just STRs. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ann Helmer. I am at 567 Indiana. And we did not plan this. I don't know this woman, but I decided to focus on the data as well. I'm a principal of a school, and as you can imagine, a special needs school. There's a lot of complaints that I deal with on a regular basis. And when I look at an issue, I think to myself, "Is this a real or perceived problem?" So I really wanted to dive into the data and pulled that STR hotline data that this woman before me just happened to mention, and she's 100% correct. With that data, I did a dive, and I will email you all this. I have some beautiful pie graphs for you to look at and bore you with. But with the total amount of residents using the numbers, the hotline, which opened, as mentioned, December of '23, there is 0.5% of the total population of the city of South Haven called this number. So 20 individuals called the hotline for complaints. There were individuals that called with inquiries, not counting those individuals. When you break that down, there was over 50% of the STR hotline complaints came from one individual. The majority, 13 of individuals who called with valid complaints that weren't thrown out, were one-time callers. Two individuals, two times; two individuals, four times; and one individual, 26 times, is from the data that I pulled. The number-one issue was parking. Again, that's similarly parking over the line, but these weren't all founded. There were some that were not founded for various reasons, people that called that weren't correct. And when you look at the issues, the majority of them, how they were resolved is important, were resolved by the owner or the agent within the 45-minute period. 35%, roughly, of those complaints were solved right away. There was also 20% that were deemed not to be an issue. There was also 10% that had no resolution listed. So when you look at the real numbers, where does the data support that this is the problem?
Yeah, one minute.
Because I've asked, I've sat here and listened, and we're talking about the disruption that comes to the neighborhood. I understand wanting to strike that balance, and I'm going to echo what other individuals have said. Those of us who have STRs, that we do follow the rules, that we are... I own this house with my best friend from high school. We use it as a second home. We also use short-term rental to offset the income. And some of the very vocal members of the Neighbors Need Neighbors community have rented my home from me twice. So when it comes to the impact on the community, I really want to look at those numbers, and I'm not seeing the evidence to support it. Should the regulations stay in place? Absolutely. They need to be there, and the hotline should exist for a reason. But we are following the rules. Only 30 houses had complaints lodged against them. Out of the 700, that's roughly 4% of the homes. And some of them were clearly repeat callers, and the data's in here.
Your time is up.
So thank you all.
Good evening. Bob Sherman, 250 North Shore Drive. I'm not going to speak to the passionate issues like occupancy. I'm going to suggest that this ordinance is in desperate need of a good editor. Have you ever had this experience where you've texted a message on your phone, and you find that spell check has changed one of your words to something, "Oh, my God, I didn't mean that"? Well, here's two words that pass every spell check: complaint and compliant. They only differ by the order of the A and E I. But they're used in multiple places in this proposed ordinance inappropriately. Somebody needs to check things like that. I'm going to refer to your agenda packet on page 24, section 14-502A and B. 14-502A and B have identical wording, identical. I think probably you meant for one of them to reference 28 days or less and one to reference more than 28 days, but they both say 28 days or less. On page 28, section 14-505I, there's a specific requirement for a Class 1 licensee to have, I believe it's $1 million of liability insurance, isn't it? But there's no requirement for a Class 2, no requirement whatsoever, I believe. Is that really what you meant? I think probably not. The concept of an agent to represent an owner has been in the ordinance for quite a long time. And I thought the agent was intended to act on behalf of the owner. But there's places where the wording says the licensee and the operator need to respond within 45 minutes. 45 minutes, that's pretty quick.
One minute.
Do you really need both to respond, or did you mean to say "or"? There's language in there that says the operator is either the licensee or a real estate broker. I personally happen to be on an STR permit as the agent/operator. I'm not a real estate broker. Can I no longer act in that way? Did you really mean a real estate broker has to be the agent or operator? I think there's just a lot of wording in here that needs to be cleaned up. I'll let you wrestle with the passionate topic of occupancy. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jeff Paulin. I live at 322 Superior Street. You know, the actions of the city council of changing all these ordinances are going to drive investment money out of the South Haven, and we need investment money. I think every house west of Center Street toward the lake is going to lose 20% of value if this ordinance passes. And it's just going to be devastating. We're a tourist town. We've got to have tourists, and without them, we'd dry up and blow away. I don't think somebody threatened suing the city. I think the thing to do with the city is disband it and make it be the township. And I'm not afraid to start circulating petitions to abandon the city.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Renee Poliani from 654 Indiana. I've been vacationing here since I was in high school. That was a very long time ago. And we actually bought our cottage in '09. So I had a cottage, and now I'm a full-time resident of nine years. But I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about me as a shopkeeper. I have a store here in town. And, you know, you can say what you want, and you can believe what you want, but we need the tourists. It takes all of us to survive down there. You can bowl through town right now and never hit a customer, you know? So, I mean, we need our day trippers that come in every week from Kalamazoo. We need our cottage owners that frequent our stores often and spend the money. We need our locals, of course. And we need the tourists that come in, the visitors, to make it work. We need all of that, that whole group for the shops to survive downtown. By limiting the amount of renters, it would really greatly affect us. And, you know, I've done the math. We need them. There's five months out of the year we barely get by. We have to save to get through those months. So please consider that. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Sooder from 222 Brockway Avenue. I've owned my home here for 21 years now, and, well, I guess it'll be 22 now. And we have always wanted to live in South Haven, but we never could afford to live here because we couldn't get jobs that would pay enough to be able to have us own our house over here. So I've always been a short-term rental person. My husband and I were both teachers. And we're very privileged to have a house here and be able to come here and fix it up all the time. And I want you to know that our mission is to always drop every dollar we can into the house to make it better, nicer, hire local people. We pour so much money into, with our little house, every year. Often, I spend more money than I even bring in in gross on fixing it up, buying things in the community, in the local stores. I, on purpose, come and wait to go to Charlie's Jewelers or to the nutrition shop in town to buy because I want to buy local here. I care about South Haven. But limiting my ability to rent to people that love it even more than I do, that their little grandkids think that that house is their house because they come every year, and now I have to tell them they can't come because they have too many people? Because they have two more than what I'm allowed now? You know, we have seating and beds for 13, but I always say 12. You can always come with just 12. Now I have to say you can only have eight. So those grandkids can't come anymore. It's very rare that I ever have more than six adults at a time. Usually, it's the kids that are the extras. And my house feels very comfortable with six or eight adults together. We have a lot of seating, very comfortable bedding, and I've never had a complaint. The neighbor across the street, we have a great relationship with her. We make sure that we park the cars in the driveway. We're very compliant, and we're very happy to pay the money to have the, you know, regulation.
One minute.
That, you know, like every year, the person comes and checks our house and makes sure that we have the fire detection and, you know, all that stuff. We're happy to do that. And we want more people to comply with the rules that aren't on the STR official list. But the way that you're limiting this program is going to hurt everyone, and no one has been able to predict our January change in our economy. People are scared. They don't have money now to even buy food. And to cut us also, it's going to be terrible for everybody, and it'll be worse for the... It's going to be terrible for everybody, and it'll be worse for the owners of the businesses, the employees of our town. I'm not going to be able to employ the cleaning lady I've had for four years if I don't have the rentals. It's going to hurt her the most. She lives in a trailer, and Amazon doesn't even want to deliver to her house because they're afraid no one lives there. That's who I'm employing. This is going to hurt everybody, the locals who live here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Emily Westling. I live at 765 St. Joseph Street. I'm a local resident and also the general manager of Anchor Point Vacations here in town. I'm part of the South Haven Vacation Rental Alliance and the Property Rights Coalition. I'm here in opposition to the proposed regulatory ordinance, particularly the drastic reductions in occupancy limits. While I understand the city's desire to refine regulations, it is unfair and unreasonable to impose these burdens retroactively on existing short-term rentals that have been operating responsibly. The ordinance proposes a more than 34% reduction in occupancy impacting 95% of short-term rentals. According to the 2023 Robi report, this would be devastating for our local economy, leading to an estimated $12 million loss in revenue for South Haven businesses and a loss of nearly 146 jobs at minimum. These numbers should be alarming to anyone who values economic stability and job security in South Haven. The city justifies these reductions based on parking concerns, yet your own memo admits that there's no clear evidence this will solve the issue. Is it worth the legal risk to make sweeping changes without certainty? The homeowners I represent do not want lawsuits, but if their livelihoods and financial stability are threatened, they will defend their rights. Is the council prepared to face expensive legal battles? Do you want your legacy to be defined by lawsuits that drain the city of resources over an occupancy change you aren't even sure will work? I've heard the claim that homeowners aren't harmed by these reductions. That is false. If a home was permitted for 12 occupants and is suddenly reduced to eight, that's like only having 2/3 of the permit you once had. You don't lose it outright, but you lose a significant portion of its value and viability. Beyond homeowners, these restrictions threaten jobs in local businesses. My job would not exist without short-term rentals, and I'm far from the only one. If the council intends to drive STRs out of South Haven, I want to know what is the plan to replace those jobs, lost revenue, and economic activity?
Give one minute.
And if South Haven is serious about affordable housing, there are better solutions than restricting STRs. Housing shortages are driven by overregulation and policies that stifle development, not by STRs. Instead of punishing existing homeowners, the city should focus on streamlining approval processes for new housing, using objective zoning standards, and creating real incentives for affordability. I urge the council not to move forward with the ordinance as written. If you insist on these changes, they should only apply to new permits going forward, not retroactively to existing responsible STRs. I ask you, will your legacy be one of fairness, prosperity, and thoughtful governance, or will it be one of lawsuits, economic decline, and a city struggling under the weight of its own restrictions? Please do the right thing. Grandfather existing STRs at their current occupancy levels and focus on forward-looking solutions that truly benefit South Haven.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Man, you needed that, didn't you? I too had a little. My name is Kathleen Ben. I live at 223 North Shore Drive, Unit 101. I am a registered voter in the city. I also happen to be president of the North Shore Condominium Association, 83 units right on Lake Michigan, formerly known as Lake Crest Towers. We've had a bad reputation in the early days, but we have overcome that now. We're building and doing nice things there. Our residents are 40% non-renter owners, 39, or, sorry, 40 owners are, do not rent, 39 do. We've struggled with this, just like the city of South Haven has, and we've done a lot of workarounds to try and do that. It's very fluent. As soon as one problem comes up, we face it and we get on with another one. We're trying to build this divisive nature that encompasses all of the United States today. I'm very encouraged about what I walked into in your closed special assessment and how, session, and how you're reconsidering the two and the two. I think it's a very great definition, and I thank you for that and working toward that. I've been speaking with Mary Hoesley, and we have had some very good conversations about helping everybody, and most of the people talking tonight looked at that chart that came out, and, you know, we're going from 12 to eight, right? Oh, yeah, that's detrimental. But now you're already having those discussions because you're hearing the people here tonight, and thank you for that. We've cut back. We don't allow visitors on our property anymore. We used to allow a couple people per week. We don't do that anymore because that was bringing in the excess people to our community. We also limit to seven-day rentals.
Give one minute.
Thank you. And that helps our transient nature, you know, that brings them in. Let the hotels and the B&amp;Bs with all those open rooms handle those and maybe limit by night, but anyway, I don't know. I think that's about it. But I do appreciate all of your hard work on a terrible subject. I really do. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Linda Lamb, 51 Cass Street, 740 North Shore Drive. I feel like a broken record. I mean, from the 2016 ordinance, what's wrong with it? There's nothing wrong with it. We've ruminated this for nine frickin' years. We keep going over it and over it, and there's no issues. I'm getting tired of it. There's no parking issues. If there's parking, then you guys figure out where do we put a garage? That's the solution. You want to bring more tourists to this town. Where we, what are we going to do when you cut us back and you lost $12 million? You all were tourists. Joe, you came here as a tourist from Kalamazoo and bought. Mary, you just did. You bought four years ago. If it was that bad, why did you buy here? This is ridiculous. I can't even wrap my head around all this. To me, it's almost shady. We went from five minutes tonight down to three. You come out with these changes Friday night. Do you think we trust you? Do you really think we trust you? We have zero trust in any of you because you're pulling all these shenanigans. We comply. You've got a hotline. There's no complaints, and I'm getting sick of it. You know, I went through death threats back in the day when this all started. I've been through hell and back, and I'm telling you one thing, I'm not going anywhere. We will see you in court if it comes to that, but this is ridiculous.
One minute.
You have bigger fish to fry. Fix the potholes on these streets. I'm serious. Bring economy in. Who's going to cover for Sherman's loss? Who's going to cover for the Golden Bakery loss? You guys are missing the whole thing. This is why we voted for you to bring in economic development, not destroy the town. And I'll be damned if you make me go downhill. I've worked too hard. I work seven days a week. And my homes are not slums. I have parking. I have everything above and beyond, and I comply, and I work every day of the week to keep my properties up because I love this town, and I'll be damned if you guys kick me out of this town.
Thank you. Okay. No applause. No applause, please. Let's move on.
How you doing? Ed Giles with 923 Phoenix Expressway. As most of you know, I say Phoenix Expressway because there aren't too many cars that take Phoenix that don't speed. 20, 30 miles above the speed limit all day, all night, we hear it from our bedroom window, from our living room. We want to talk, our council here, it talks about the immediate neighborhood and how the problems that short-term rentals have, and, you know, you don't want a hotel next to you. This is my immediate neighborhood. The house next to us has been vacant for about a year and a half, being remodeled. Nobody's there. The house to the right of us is owned by an out-of-state family that's only there about 10 or 15% of the time, so that's vacant, too. We got snowbirds out across the street from us who are only here six months out of the year, and the other house is for sale. There's nobody there. There's some, there's some garage right across the street from us that's supposed to be historic or something. Nobody can do anything with that. So our immediate neighborhood is basically us. My wife and I are here two to three times a month for three, four days at a time. We try, okay? And we appreciate all the rentals we get. I come back to the speed limit on Phoenix because it's ridiculous. I'm surprised there hasn't been more accidents and stuff. Maybe huge slow-down signs or something, plus the fact that I'll look out my window and here's a deer crossing the street from one ravine to the other across the street. I've seen multiple deer. I've seen coyote. I've seen turkey two years ago crossing the street. I'd hate to see one of them smeared across the street because somebody's doing 65 down Phoenix. I think we need short-term rentals. I don't agree with-
One minute.
That's fine. That's business. I think the business community needs it. You don't want, I don't know why people are talking about there's too many rentals and stuff. I don't, I don't think this, this community, and I don't live here, I'll admit that, I don't think this community needs to be a one-horse town again, and I really don't. You made so much progress. We've had the house for three years. We've seen so much progress in this town. It's really enviable. It's just like all the other ones up and down the coast, and I appreciate us being here. I don't like the fact that the rules change year to year where our fire extinguishers can be this big, the next year it's got to be twice the size. We got to, we got to, you know, deal with the housing, the bedrooms and stuff every year and that, and everything changes, and we seem to have no recourse to-
Your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thanks for the time that you've spent on this. I know it's been a monumental task. 294 Park Avenue, Robert Holmes. So I'm a little bit different story than what you've been hearing tonight. I'm trying to become a resident. So I live in Kalamazoo. I've voted out here for probably 20 years. I have a slip in the Northside Municipal Marina that I spend my summers in, at least as much as I can, and I want to become a resident. How can I become a resident here? I bought a great piece of property. It had a dilapidated house. The house probably should have been condemned when we got into it. We end up tearing it down. There's a great barn on the property that I'm trying to save that probably most people would destroy because it blocks the view of the river, but I happen to be a lover of barns, and this is a great barn, and it's probably been in the city longer than any of us have been alive. So how do I become a resident? Well, STR was going to be one of my, my ways to do it. I can stay on my boat in the summer. I could rent it out. It could probably pay my property taxes, and then I could become a resident here. But with the new boundary lines, I wouldn't be able to do that, and it's really disheartening that I bought such an expensive piece of property with the aspirations of becoming a resident here, and the new overlay doesn't include it for me to do that. So I'd like for you to know and just take it into consideration of what the boundary line is. I know there's a lot of other factors that have, that have been gone. I understand the neighbors for neighbors, you know, where there may be a concentrated amount in one neighborhood. I believe there's going to be a way that we can, that we can address this. However, I'm not in support of what has been drafted, and I would hope that you would take tonight and all the comments that we had-
One minute.
And I'll give you an extra minute, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Cindy Compton, 11340 76th Street. I don't live in the city of South Haven. I do have property here, and we operated a business from 1984 until when we sold it to our son in 19, or, I'm sorry, in 2018. I just have a few points I want to make. Number one, I've sat on different, I've been on the planning commission in the township. I've been on board review. I've served on boards. I'm on the Brownfield Authority for Van Buren County. I'm sitting there, and this isn't anything that I thought about before I came, but what are you voting on? I'm wondering if you should really table the hearing and resume it after you really know what you're going to vote on, because I printed out this, and I had some questions like, where did the number come? You know, what about the bathrooms? I grew up in a house of seven people in one bathroom, so I'm looking at this, but you're changing it, and if you're having a hearing, wouldn't it be good to have the hearing after you know what the ordinance is going to be, and you have a little more time to think about it, not do it on the fly? The other thing, I've been involved with some economic development, and I know you don't owe anybody, whether their investment turns out right or not, you know, that Mary Lynn Bogey made that point, but you do need to have a stable environment for investment, and you're not creating that. You have red flags all over the place by the way this has been handled, and I'm not a finger pointer. I don't like to call people out, but you need to consider the stakeholders, not, the residents are important, and some of them are full-time, others are not, but consider the stakeholders in this. It's risky to invest in South Haven right now. My husband and I bought a piece of property. We want to build and live in town.
One minute.
I was contacted a design bill company, and they said we won't work in the city of South Haven. It's just not a stable environment right now, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Stacy Dupree, 79 Park Avenue. I inherited the house from my mom, who bought it in 1990, and I need the short-term rentals to help keep the home. My question is for the council. We talk a lot about, you know, how it'll affect everybody in this room, but if these tax dollars go away, imagine what everybody has said here. With tariffs coming, it's going to make everything that the city does more expensive. You're not going to have the tax dollars from the homes. How much do you want the housing prices to go down in order for you to be satisfied so that they're affordable? Whatever that number is, I'm not sure. What is the impact on the city revenue in terms of taxes? Where is it going to be made up? Are you going to increase the taxes on the homes? Or are you going to, well, basically, are you going to be increasing taxes? Will the utilities go up? How are you going to make up for the millions and millions of dollars that'll be leaving South Haven? Just curious about that, and I'm sure everybody else is here as well. So for non-residents who bring in more dollars because I'm out of state and I have, you know, I don't have my homestead anymore like my mother did, I'm paying more money. That's going to your schools, that's going to the community. Where are those dollars being made up? So my question is, we want to build community, but without these dollars, you've, you know, you've done so much, so many improvements. Where's the money going to be coming from to continue to keep South Haven thriving and the businesses thriving? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Map rolls me 220 Clinton Street. I'm a three-time combat veteran and learned about South Haven from my family who visited here while I was deployed with the National Guard Unit in Kalamazoo. In 2021, I purchased my property as a place for my family to enjoy South Haven, but also as an affordable opportunity for veterans and their families to enjoy South Haven. My STR exists for veterans and their families. From July 2022 to present, almost 20 veterans and their families have enjoyed an affordable vacation in this beautiful city. If you enact these changes, very few, if any, future veterans and their families will be able to enjoy this, be able to enjoy this place and reconnect and relax with their families because my occupancy will drop to the point where it'll be prohibited. I hope you decide to take the advice of council and leave the occupancy where they're at. If not, I give this town five years. Five years, half the doors on Phoenix Street will be closed, and who knows what'll happen there. I don't know who you'll blame everything else on then because you will have ruined this city. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Brandon Cook, 508 Lena Drive, South Haven, Michigan. Also owner of Country House Furniture. I'm not worried about our store so much. We will take a hit if we, if we do get rid of some of these rentals. But the downtown businesses are gonna get hit really bad because they really, they live off of the business of the second homeowners or the people renting houses that come out every single night to spend their money downtown. We got the lake right by us, so you can't draw anybody from the lake. We said that with the furniture store. We can't draw anybody from the lake, we gotta draw for what we have in town. And when you get rid of the rentals, a lot of these people here support us. Almost all of them support our store, and they support all the businesses downtown, too. And by doing this, I think, is it really gonna hurt everything? We have, we have a lot of really good year-round people that are our customers, too. We've been around for a long time. But I do really think this might hurt. I know there's gonna be a cap on it, or you gotta do something to make everything work. But even like, even housing, when you're asking for housing in this town, why not try to do something on the other side of the highway and buy property and get some neighborhoods started or whatnot? No one ever talks about that. There's a lot of, a lot of housing that could be out there, and it could be something that people can afford. You're not gonna afford houses three blocks off the lake. That's pretty tough. It's gonna be expensive out there. But if you, if you do try to build something across the highway, then at least you have a chance to have some, some housing, some affordable housing that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
My name is Gary Bobelik. I have a property at 322 Monroe Street. We've been property owners for 10 and a half years. Just absolutely love South Haven because it was a source for family to always get together. My parents, when they were alive, brothers and sisters, their kids. And after renting short-term rentals for several seasons, we decided that we would look to purchase a house. We found an individual that couldn't afford the house he was in. He had inherited it from his parents. And we hated to see him go, but it was an opportunity for us and actually helped him in the moving process, and so did our real estate agent to make it a little more comfortable for him. We didn't rent for three years as we worked at improving the property, paint, things like that, because it was a fixer-upper. When we talked to an agent in town about short-term rentals, it looked like it was appealing. So we went down the path of doing short-term rentals, and we had consistently had to deal with changes in the policies. We adopted, when we had to add a egress window, we put the egress window in, even after we had replaced it with a newer window that was more energy efficient. Then found out that, okay, that law changed, we could do away with that, but, you know, everything is left. The occupancy seems to work out fine. You know, we don't attract huge families. It's usually multi-generational with kids and aunts and uncles and such. I think it would be harder to accommodate the same families that have been consistent-
One minute.
Have been consistent renters over three or four years at a span. And we would like to continue that. My thought was with the state of uncertainty in today's economy, you know, tariffs and such, let the board push this out till more, till the end of summer metrics come in, and then look at, look at this again in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ron Wall. I live at 600 Virginia. I am a full-time resident. I have two little girls that live here. I've been standing out there because I really didn't want to get in this fight. But I'm hearing all these nice people. It is time, how did we allow in the last eight years of very few people to get us to this point? We're worried about how many people are in a room. Why? Our schools, if you look at, we've got so many things that we could be doing instead of doing this. We shouldn't even have short-term, I get the loss. Like I said, I want it quiet for my kids, 10 o'clock, be quiet. I live next to a marina, and luckily they are, but they're all short-term rentals. It is time to ban short-term restrictions. Let's get rid of this. It's not working. It is, I'm tired of this. You guys have gotta be tired of this. How many times can you sit here and listen? You've got three or four people that are obviously the ones calling 50% of the time that you listen to. They're sitting here like Rumpelstiltskin, stopping on their little feet, worrying about their driveway's not big enough, they only can fit in 1.75 cars. I don't care. Parks are where else? If you want to go to the beach, get there early. Or walk to box, it's not gonna hurt anybody. It is time to stop this. We don't need any short-term restrictions. We need to be the first city to say, hey, everybody's welcome, you can afford here one day, or if you can afford to live here for 30 years. Just stop it. Come on. We have rules. I mean, why, why did this even start? A couple people, I gotta be nice. But let's, let's be accommodating, let's be friendly. We could make national news by being the first one to ban short-term restrictions. It's not helping anybody, and you can hear how many people it's hurting.
One minute.
Like I said, I don't have a real big dog in this fight. I do live here full-time. My great-great-grandfather was born here in 1867, so we've been here forever. My grandfather had a major business here for the longest time, so, but let's, let's stop this. Let's be the first city to say, we are friendly, we are nice. Behave when you're here, obviously, that's what everybody tries to do, but if somebody lives here for seven days, seven months, or seven years, we all live by the same thing. Why do we keep beating this horse? This horse is done. Let's just get rid of it. It's not working. It's like prohibition was. It was a great idea for some people, but it did not work. So we made another amendment, said, stop this craziness. But let's just stop it and be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Stop the applause, please. I know you like it. Anybody else?
Scott Ossing from 1267 Monroe Boulevard. And I was just listening to a lot of the things that were happening tonight, people, what they were saying, and I heard that this is most likely illegal as written. It would result in a loss of jobs, it would result in loss of revenue for local businesses. This is going to cost the city a lot of money, especially if it goes to court. So I'll make it quick. If you want to strike a balance, ask the short-term rental owners. They're willing to help, just ask. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mary Lynn Bogey, 70 Gabriel Drive. I'm gonna say something that, or be one of the few people to say it. I did say it when I spoke before. I appreciate the fact that you're looking at the overlay district, it's a fair one. It does allow for a few more to come in, a few more short rentals to come in. And I also appreciate the fact that what you're looking at will cap it off at what we have now, which is fine, and it'll last for many, many years. There'll be 700, more than 700 rentals in this, in the city, which will accommodate many, many tourists. I have no objections to tourists, I enjoy them. My husband and I have both walked on festivals that were had here. We like the liveliness that it brings in. Don't object to them at all. What we do want to see neighborhoods that actually exist is neighborhoods where you have families, where you do have people that live here year-round, and will enable other people to come in here and live year-round. People that operate their short-term rentals responsibly, fine, great. If they don't, and there's a complaint and it's taken after, looked after, that's fine, too. And yes, I did call in one complaint, which was not deemed to be responsible, even though what I complained about is actually prohibited under the ordinance. There were two complaints like that, one by me, one by a neighbor, and they were listed as not being valid complaints, perhaps under the call-ins, they were not valid, but they were valid objections. Again, thank you for the overlay district, thank you for now limiting the number of rentals. If you want to look at the occupancy issue to see if it can be perhaps fairer for the people already have them, fine, please do. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I am Monica Wozniak, and I actually live outside of the city now. I got brought into this by working at Beachwalk Properties. And when I came into this organization, I was appalled. I was like, what do you mean? Everybody is fighting against this? South Haven has always been a tourist town. Ward one, affordable housing, what is that? Like Mr. Cobb said, what is that? You guys want to bring affordable housing? Do we not have the homes there for affordable housing? What is that for? I am appalled because I've been here forever, and it's always been for the tourists. It has never been about the community. That is why we leave. Nobody leaves because of short-term rentals. Never have they, never will they. My mom was born and raised here, it goes way back, probably 1900s for my family. And Ward one, the zone, let's be real, the zone is where I was born, raised, and have been about. So when it comes to affordable housing, what is that? Somebody explain it, because it's not a thing for Ward one or anybody in this community that's trying to do something. So let's be realistic, let's be real. And ask yourself, are you serious? Because this is not it. That's all I have to say.
Next. Anybody else?
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I take great offense to that word, that name zone. It's not called for and should not be a part of this assembly on tonight. We live in the Pleasant View Estate. I lived in South Haven for 58 years. South Haven has, what's been stated before earlier, South Haven has always been a tourist place, a tourist town, and will continue to be even after the decisions that are made on tonight. But the Upjohn Report warns South Haven of becoming a city solely relying on STRs for economic stability. I'm standing here on tonight in full support of the council on the proposed STR ordinance and changes. This is something that myself, as well as many other year-round residents have been wanting, wanting for several years. And in spite of what's been said, I've always been consistent, consisting, consistent on my position on STRs, especially with the numbers of STRs that we have in South Haven compared to other lakeshore municipalities. South Haven has always been a tourist place as stated, but not managing the allowed number of STRs in our city has impacted the quality of life for many year-round residents. Those who had plans of working hard in their youth with expectations of retiring in a neighborhood with year-round neighbors. I believe the changes that are being proposed with this new ordinance will help stop the further damages to our city and the characteristics of our neighborhoods due to an oversaturation of STRs. I like the idea, council, I like the ideas of limiting, not having any more permits or STRs except for in areas where there's an overlay. I think I said that back in 2017. I spoke to overlays then. I like that idea, and I like the idea was-
Yeah, one minute.
-your suggestion of, of a cap to 12 in occupancy. Again, I want to thank the council for your willingness and your hard work, and just being able to make this, this tough decision on tonight. Again, I appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Carrie Weber, my home is at 606 Maple. I really wasn't gonna speak today because so much has been said, but I just wanted to do a couple quick things. On my way here from Kalamazoo today, I spoke with one of the locals that helps us with our homes. I asked him, him and his family, help us with various things, and we have various families that help us. I asked him, what percentage of your homes or your business do you think come from short-term rentals? Because I hear so often that the locals will just make it up. And he said, honestly, it's probably about 75% from short-term rentals, about 25% from local homeowners. And him and his family, his kid, is trying to, you know, encourage that. And one thing that he said to me, and I've met with some local leaders here in the past, which honestly, when I walked out the meeting, I thought, wow, you know, these are things we need to think about, these are things we need to work together in the community to get. And I asked to speak to some people on the council about affordable housing and things. I tried to set up meetings in Kalamazoo, some came, that's great. Others refused to meet with me. We offered to help with some of the things. I know it's because I'm a short-term rental owner, that's fine. But one of the things that struck me tonight when I was talking to this gentleman, because he is local, he said, you know, I never thought how I could make a business for myself with short-term rentals. These kids are coming to me and coming to my kid and telling me, I see new opportunities that I never could think of before. And I told them, I said, you know, maybe short-term rental isn't the place for your kid to be for the rest of their life, but isn't it great that these kids in South Haven are thinking of becoming entrepreneurs? I'm not saying that because I'm nervous. But they're thinking about all these other opportunities. Yeah, and we've done all the other. I just gave three rooms worth of furniture to three different families for free in South Haven because these people mean a lot to me. I know-
Yeah, one minute.
Some people stalk my social media, I've seen the posts about my family on the NNN page. You know, I'm more worried sometimes about the neighbors than my rentals, but I want to follow all the rules. I rent for eight people in my home, it can sleep 10 per my permit, I have safety ladders that are not required from the city. Please work with the short-term rentals that want to do good here, and, you know, we can do good things together, but it isn't happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Anthony, I live at 348 Baseline-
I live at 348 Baseline. I'm sure what I was going to stand up here and say, because I think most people did a pretty good job of covering a lot of the concerns. I know you guys get emails, phone calls. It's been a long five, six years. I think just the one thing that kind of stands to me is I think, you know, obviously, I'm involved in the STR business. I guess I do property management. I have eight or nine companies. I think out of all of them, I probably work, 5% of my client base through all those companies are locals, which makes sense. Most of the house improvement stuff we do, if you live here, you could do it yourself. You have more time. You know, this winter, during the summer, I think all companies combined, I probably ballooned about 60 to 70 people already this winter. You know, I had to lay off a handful of people due to the fact that the homes we work in are rental investments. People are concerned about, you know, the direction we're heading in, and obviously, they smartly decided to reserve some funds just in case. So I know you guys are probably thinking along those lines of the fallout from changing things that have existed. The biggest concern out of all the things I invest is my personal property, the one I live in, which is, I read all these rules, I find it interesting that I violate all the rules of my own home. But the homes that I invest in, we follow them to the T. A lot of locals, which I'm starting to think, I don't know the locals, because I don't know who it is in your ears and who it is you guys ultimately work for, because, you know, the hundreds of people that I know that live here don't have the issues that are spouted in these rule changes you guys have. That being said, most of the people that I know that live here, I'm not going to say are not law-abiding, but violate all the rules that we're trying to put in for STRs. The biggest violators are parking, are people that live here. I mean, drive around here in the winter, you'll see it. If you don't see it, you're not looking. Noise complaints, they're locals, they're not renters.
You have one minute.
That's fantastic. So I'm pretty sure I'm just rambling there, but, you know, again, as I look at, I bought this home, I've been in town for almost 15 years. Maybe someday I'll be a local. I'm not sure what the classification is anymore. I didn't have three kids at the time. You know, the home I've invested probably too much money, because if the rental investor is not here in town to purchase these homes, the property values will sink. So potentially, the 70, 80 grand I put into my house, it won't ever be worth it. Bad decision by me, but at the time that I did this, we had rules in place. Furthermore, I know it's five seconds or so, the rules that were here in '16, '17 cover all the stuff. Police departments cover the rules, noise, and it's all covered. So I just don't get why you guys are wasting your time based on some emails and phone calls from disgruntled folks in certain neighborhoods. They can move, just like I bought a home here, I could sell it, and I can relocate. Thank you.
I'm Steve Ryan from 281 Park. This is my second home, so I do live in Kalamazoo. As I'm going through listening to a lot of the different occupancy numbers, and the first thing that seemed to be said was safety. So we're doing this in the guise of safety. Have there actually ever been any injuries based on occupancy numbers being too high? The first thing I think about is, I have my renters, and they come back year after year after year. They love the place, they love where they stay. If they felt unsafe, they wouldn't come back. They'd go someplace else. So is it really necessary to start putting these reduced guidelines in for safety? I'd love to know if there was a study done to say, oh, yep, the minimum room size should be this, because it's 50% safer. Where do the numbers come from? Are they arbitrary? Somebody just kind of say, eh, that sounds like a good number, what, 50 square foot per person? I'd just love to know where the study came from for that kind of thing. But again, supply and demand, right? If the people don't like what they are getting, they won't come back, and then the numbers would be reduced anyways. So just take that in consideration when you're coming up with your numbers, that real facts should control it.
If not, oh.
Hi, my name's Sean McKeel. I live at 429 Superior Street. The last time I was here, I asked the board to reconsider their mindset on who they think is a homeowner and who is a renter. I hope that you're still considering that when you make your decisions here soon. It's very disheartening to see that we have to keep going through this over and over again when we are all currently following the rules that are already in place and there's no I would like somebody to tell me, and I know you don't respond, but I read these new rules, and I would like somebody to tell me where these rules are come up, are brought up from, where they come from. Like the gentleman before me, the 50%, is that just what, what makes it 50% more safe? I don't know. Lastly, if you're an SCR, here for the STRs and support of them, and you would like to stand up, go ahead and stand up.
We're not doing that, am I right?
Oh, this is your time to talk.
Yeah. I don't want them to say anything, I just want you to see. We're your neighbors. You say neighbors need neighbors. We are your neighbors, we're here. You represent us. So when you make your decision, consider the fact that 99% of the people that spoke tonight, 98%, I don't know exactly, are asking you, why are you making these changes? Why is this even an issue? Just let us continue to do our work.
You have one minute.
We follow your rules, nothing's happened, a few people have complained, well, one person, at least, we know of. So just please consider that when you go to make your vote here shortly. Thank you.
My name, excuse me, my name is Sam Ramon. I'm at 532 Dyke Men, it's the Colonial. My wife and I invested in 20. And just kind of listening to, we've seen increase in costs to our inspections. Our units are small. It takes five minutes, but we have to pay the same rate as a seven-bedroom house, you know, but we continue to kind of go ahead and take care of that. We pay a high property tax rate for our property, for 400 square feet, we pay a lot of money. But we love this town. We have fallen in love with this town. Came here when I was a kid and went to North Beach and did stupid stuff, and now we get to come back as adults and do some stupid stuff. But we have a great time, we meet great people, we love this community. My concern tonight is, what's the enforcement of this look like? You know, we have a property, and you're saying I would be limited to, at this point, maybe two people in our unit, because it's a deficiency, but we have a sofa sleeper. And we market two couples, but occasionally, they have two young kids, maybe a, like, you know, little crib or something that would come with them. But my family uses our properties, too. I bring my kids up, and my kids have kids. And sometimes, there's six of us in that unit. You know, how do you enforce, how do you know when somebody's renting it? How do you know when somebody's using it for their personal use? Are you going to restrict? If you restrict my personal use, are you restricting the rest of the community's personal use? Are you putting these restrictions on every home in this community? And then how do you actually monitor? And how do you enforce that? And what's the cost of that? And who's going to be able to do that? And I think there's a lot of things that maybe haven't been considered. It seems like we're taking steps because we don't like crowded restaurants in the summertime. We don't like the traffic. We don't like the extra activity. And it seems like we're, and maybe there's been a few, few owners that are issues. But it seems like you're taking that opportunity to deal with those individuals and putting a blanket on everybody and punishing-
You have one minute.
Thank you. And punishing everybody that's following the rules. You know, the Colonial, we actually changed our bylaws to support short-term rentals in our building, and probably 14 of the 21 owners do short-term rentals. We've seen appreciation in our building because of it, and also, we've brought in a bunch of new investors into that building, and we're excited about taking that iconic Colonial historical building and fixing it. It's been kind of neglected, and we're working on doing that, but we need that investment group that's willing to come in and help that building, because it's right at the bridge, and it's iconic for the South Haven community. But if we can't rent, we can't be here, and our values are going to depreciate. And we're going to, we're going to look for other opportunities, because it's what we're going to do. You know, we have to create some income from that property. So I appreciate you guys considering the bigger picture and all the implication of what might be happening with-
Your time is up.
Nick Kish, 619 LaGrange Street. I really did not plan on speaking, so I'm going to just kind of skip some of the points that I know other people have made. My husband and I are both from South Haven, and in September, we were able to move back. I have managed short-term rentals at Beachwalk Properties for eight years, and it is through that career that I have been afforded the right to do so. Without it, we would not have moved back. The house we bought is a small house. It's quite old, in fact, it's so old that the city records don't have any knowledge of how old it is. It's 860 square feet. That house, that is what I would consider affordable housing, and I think most of you would agree as well, was on the market for $225,000. It was on the market for 143 days, I just looked up. Looked that up because I'm also one of the greedy realtors in town, as we've been dubbed. We did not rush to buy that house. We were not in bidding wars. We were not in situations where we had to trample over 10 other showings. That house was an affordable house. Now, some people might say it sat on the market that long because it didn't have a rental permit, but it did. It actually had a personal short-term rental permit, and the day we closed, I could have occupied it because it came furnished. We bought that house for $199,000. That is the definition of affordable housing. It is here. That house even had a rental permit, and it sat vacant for five months. So it's here. Affordable housing is here, it's just a matter of, did somebody want it? And in that case, clearly, nobody did until we bought it. So that is something to consider as well. You know, if this ordinance did pass as it's, I'm not going to say that we would be forced to move. I think we'd be fortunate enough with investments that we have, because we do also own long-term rentals that we run affordably to people outside of the city limits, because we couldn't afford to do so inside the city limits with tax rates. But we would be, have to consider moving. We don't plan to rent our house out, but I do keep the insurance permit, for lack of better words, as an insurance blanket, that if something should happen, those four weeks-
You have one minute.
...property taxes, maybe a couple mortgage payments, and that is a possibility. But considering our exact house, that would eliminate our ability to do so. I mean, it's a small two-bedroom house, our permit's for six, it would go down to four. Some would argue then it becomes, it's actually on a non-conforming lot, and we might not have ample parking, and it would go down there. The other note I wanted to make is, I'm a little deterred that we went from five minutes to three minutes, considering certain people on council who pushed for that have actually said previously, no, and they fought that in other meetings. And I've been here for every meeting since September that we've been here. So I thought that was very interesting to see, that council members who say, no, keep five minutes, now tonight on short-term rentals, on something that's a personal agenda of them, have now gone to three. That's all.
Thank you.
619 LaGrange, Jordan. I'm attached to the person that just spoke here. And I've, I've lived here my whole life. I worked downtown 95% of my career, my jobs, restaurants. I left for a little bit and worked in Kalamazoo. And we were able to buy, I was able to buy the house in South Haven, because, well, I bought a house in Bangor first, because I was able to, with the job I had that came money from tourism, in Bangor. I bought it for my mom to have somewhere to live. I sold it, I moved to Lawrence, and I moved back to South Haven. We, you know, probably shouldn't be saying this, because I haven't told my family, but we want to start a family. We started the adoption process. It's expensive. If you guys pass this ordinance, it is going to cut into my personal income, where we probably won't be able to do it. So you guys want young people to live here, you want families, you want people that are going to put children in the schools, and you're making it hard. And I'm also going to echo, I think it's, I don't think the five minutes should have been changed to three. Mayor has asked before to change to three, and Mary, you've been against it, because you said people plan to speak for five minutes. And I know those meetings are long, but some of you are just up here with a glazed look over your face. You don't care what we're saying. You say you do, you don't. You've already made up your minds. Nothing we say is probably going to change it, and it's sad. We shouldn't be able to be able to come to a meeting and know exactly how each and every one of you are going to vote on topics. We shouldn't. So take it for what it is, but that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, are you coming up to speak, or are you leaving? Oh, you've already spoken once. Okay.
I move to close public hearing.
All in favor, did someone second it?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing's closed. Let's hear from city council members. George, I'll start with you.
Oh, yeah. Break?
What?
Recession? Recession, do you want to take a recess, or no?
Oh, do we need a recess?
I would say, do you all need a recess? I know we've take, it's about 9:30.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Short five.
Short five minutes. Short five minutes. We are back in session. Thank you for all your comments. Kate, would you like to give us some guidance?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I know that we've had quite a bit of comment tonight, and I know that previously, we had had some discussion about STR occupancy, which seems to be a main focus of what has been kind of brought up tonight. Dave, did you have an idea about maybe a way forward here? And I think it also needs to be said that because I know that there's already been some discussion about STR occupancy, staff and the attorney are looking for some guidance on a few topics, but it's very clear that the proposed ordinance is not ready to be adopted tonight, but we are looking for some guidance on a few topics. And with that going forward, that's kind of where we want to dig in.
Yeah, thanks, Kate. Yes, Mayor, council, during the recess, Kate and I were able to synthesize the comments that have been made by the public, the comments that have been made by council, and as a proposed, I'll say, starting point on a way forward for occupancy, we would, or I would suggest that council entertain the concept of maximum occupancy may not exceed the total number of occupants permitted for all bedrooms within the dwelling units, one or two per floor, provided there's adequate egress and sleeping, subject to a cap. So that's kind of what I said at the top. The compromise could be, subject to a cap of 12, unless the dwelling unit had previously been permitted for maximum occupancy higher than that, in which case that prior maximum occupancy would be the cap for that, for that rental unit. And I think this is somewhat based off of what council member Reser had said earlier in terms of, well, can we make a distinction between the old ones and the new ones? I think if we did it this way, it would address the safety issues because it's still got to be compliant bedroom. They say they still have to have, can only have so many people in a bedroom based off the square footage of the bedroom. That number was pulled from the IPMC. We're taking into account the traditional use of what we call a common area sleeper sofa, something like that, again, provided there's egress and adequate sleeping facilities. We recognize, again, the impacts the occupancy have, has on the surrounding neighborhood, so we're capping it at 12. But the compromise again is if you were previously occupied in maximum occupancy higher than that, that's your cap. Now, you still have to abide by, if you, if you had four people in a bedroom and that bedroom was only 100 square feet, that's still a no-no. So you still have to follow the, the rules of egress and the size, but it at least provides a path forward for somebody who had, who checked all those boxes and had a higher occupancy. So I leave that there just kind of as a potential starting point for discussion for council.
Wendy?
I guess I just don't see how that is any different than what we have now.
I think the difference is, it's lar, it's very similar. It's very similar. The difference is it kind of tightens up the rules on some of those concerns that have been expressed regarding occupancy, what, what defines a bedroom, what defines a safe egress, things like that.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think that's what we were looking for as we're trying to refine this to bring a better balance to South Haven. That doesn't really do it to me personally.
George?
We don't need comments from the crowd right now. It's our turn to talk.
I am, I'm in support of what our city attorney is saying. Again, we got to have the right balance that, one of the things that's mainly different is that there's not going to be any new short-term rentals in any area outside the overlay district. So the only thing that we're talking about are the existing ones, so.
Joe, any comments? Words of wisdom?
I guess I just want to back up first and say, I really feel bad tonight that it's many of you against many of us up here, and it shouldn't be that way. We are not your enemies. We're all in this town, and I find it ironic and sad that almost all of you say you love this town. We love the town, and yet we're bashing heads. And I just want to reiterate, if I could, you understand this is regulatory, the zoning is our planning, and the zoning part, we have already decided, it will most likely pass, that we will take no licenses away from anyone with a short-term rental right now. So the number of short-term rentals will not go down, unless, of course, abandonment, you break the rules, that we all know. So no one is reaching in your pocket and taking your money or your business away. I'm a businessman. I own my own business. Nobody takes my business. No one should take your business. But the one thing we don't talk about enough is the character and, and how people live in their communities and what the residents are looking for. And it's a tough one because it's subjective, how, the quality of life, wanting a neighbor in your neighborhood. And so it seems like we're, we're not that far apart, except the occupancy is a sticking point. So I want to find something that Mary said earlier tonight, some of you weren't here, what Wendy's saying, what Latisha's saying, and I feel in my heart the same way. I'm just looking for, and I know people will pick this part of, part, but a middle ground, but at the same time, holding firm that we're not going to have a three-bedroom house with 14 people in it, and that we don't have to play cops and robbers with our employees going checking on it. So I don't have a quick answer, Mayor. I just, I think maybe we can just talk about it somewhere.
Latisha?
Well, I still have the same, same stance. I think there should be a max, and I echo what Mr., what Mr. Reser just said about, I think this is the first time I ever felt like I was almost bullied. And that's unfortunate because, like he said, I heard someone say, "Well, I've been here all my life, and I grew up in the zone." Well, I don't quite know what the zone is, but I know I grew up in South Haven in all my life, and to say that you should just move, and I shared something with Kate before the meeting today, and I was disheartened by something. I have received text messages from, of course, Google Numbers, but today I received a text asking me, "Would I be willing to sell my home?" And I sat there for a minute, and I thought, okay, why would someone just randomly send me this text? And I thought about it, and it, it made me feel like they were saying, "Move." And I knew that it had to be related to the short-term rental because my husband received the same text. And I didn't think it was funny. I thought that that was disrespectful. Just because I have an opinion does not mean that I should move. And I don't think that some people don't deserve to live near the beach just because they are not, don't make a certain amount of money. If, I, I've owned my home for 28 years, and I live on Indiana, which I'm sure most of you already know, I live on Indiana Street, so I'm about five blocks from the beach. And I like the area where I live, but I felt, again, I felt offended for someone to make that comment to me, to make me feel like, if you don't agree with what I'm saying, you should move. Now, everyone in here say that they love South Haven. I love South Haven too, and I think that I have a right to my opinion, just like you do. And I personally do not want to live next to someone who have, who is renting out a house, who have 16 people in it. And that's my opinion. And I have a right to my opinion. And I have a problem with where I live currently on that block along, there's three houses that have went up. And I live in a simple, single-family home that is a ranch-style home, and there's a house, there's houses going up behind me that are, I mean, they're so big. They're looking over in my home. They're looking over in my yard. It doesn't look like a neighborhood. It's starting to not look like a neighborhood. Because when you look in the neighborhood, there's all these humongous homes just going up randomly. So am I saying that I have a problem with people who have short-term rental? No, I don't. So for the person that's saying that, that is not true. I, I don't have a problem with people having short-term rental. That's your business. But my problem is, I think there should be a happy medium, and I think that we should try to get along, not sit here, meeting after meeting, making nasty, making nasty comments, sending nasty texts, calling, sending nasty emails. I think that's childish. What are we accomplishing? So I think if you can give up something, we can give up something, and we can come to a common ground. We should be able to do that. We're all adults. So everyone should be able to give something. We love South Haven. Let's do something about it. I heard someone say, "They're going to put their money where their mouth is." I want to see that too. I don't want to just hear you say that. What is affordable housing? Housing that can be afforded by people who work here. There's teachers who cannot live here because they can't afford to live here. The rent, the average rent in South Haven is $1,600. When you look at homes, they're 200, $2,000. Teachers can't afford that. Am I right, Mr. Arnold?
That's correct.
Teachers cannot afford $2,000. So that, those are my comments, and I hate it to be long, but I just felt like I needed to address that.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold?
We had, we had our closed session earlier this evening, and it went quicker than we thought, and so we came back out here and to open, and since we're all here, we just started talking, talking about this issue, talking about occupancy and all those things. And Latisha spoke very eloquently during that meeting, or during that time, saying the exact same thing she just said now, but of course, she was much more passionate this time. And we certainly, and the big, the big buildings, the big buying a little house and making it a big one. During that first meeting, our legal advice said, "Well, we can address that with, through zoning." And so, and Wendy has said that she doesn't want that, and I don't want that either. And so we are certainly aware of that and concerned about that and don't want those because, and that's where we talk about the character in our, in our neighborhoods. But to get back to what Dave was saying, I would be supportive of, just like George said, the max total per bed, two per finished floor with legal egress, attics and basements, those would also have to have the legal egress. And then, just like George said, overlay districts would prevent any more new ones outside of the overlay district. And I do think we need to consider some, grandfathering is not the correct term, but legally currently existing STRs with a larger than 12 number, we would have to find a way to include them, and finally, the cap of 12. That's what I think I could support.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes. I am just disappointed with the whole process. Despite what everybody thinks, city council saw on Friday, the same time everybody else saw, the changes adding the bathroom. I was on the working group, and I did not see that before the agenda packet issued. I had no involvement whatsoever with that. What does city council want? City council has been saying since last summer, a cap of 12. And how many times do we have to advise... And how many times do we have to advise the city manager and legal council that we want a cap of 12 before we get it? Yes, I am frustrated. And it's very disrespectful of time just to be bringing this now. So what I, when I saw that, I had to think about it. I talked to some people. And on Sunday, I started thinking of how can this be reworked to really address our concerns? Because what I was seeing was failing. And in fact, just two weeks ago, we were told we met 80% of our goals. And now we're not meeting any. How does that happen in two weeks? I had suggested two per bedroom plus up to two per finished floor as long as they have proper sleeping. That is what we're told that all the short-term rentals have. They have beds. So let's make sure they have a bed. Trying to address occupancy, I doubt that anybody even noticed. But the current age for occupancy is above two. We actually increased it to three. So three and younger don't count towards occupancy. We hear you and are trying to help you. But if you don't listen to us and just continue to put words in our mouth when they don't deserve to be there, when it's misinformation, that is not moving us forward. That is driving the wedge deeper. I had asked, can we have different occupancies for different jurisdictions, different zoning districts, excuse me, like we currently have? I have yet to have that question answered. We have said we want 12 in our residential districts because this is a commercial use. Our Michigan Supreme Court has said it's a commercial use. Our residents deserve residential uses in our residential districts. Having 12 in a residential district seems pretty reasonable to me. These licenses that set occupancy are annual licenses. There's no guarantee that you get them year after year, and there are requirements to go through it. As for the overlay zone and saying we will never have new STRs in our residential districts, as I said before our 7 o'clock regular meeting, that assumes that somebody with a short-term rental now does not take down their home and build a bigger one. Because currently, as the ordinance is written, despite my request to modify it, it does not prevent someone from tearing down a home and rebuilding it and losing that use. There are safeguards in our current ordinances that have been ignored that would have prevented that, and that has not been incorporated, despite my request. So do I accept what's being proposed? No, because I have, it's not answering, my questions have not been answered. There's assumptions that are being made to advance a goal, an agenda. And that is not what's right for our community, considering we've been trying to do this since last summer. And that is very disappointing that we haven't, that the staff and legal council haven't gotten us there yet. And as for, I'm going to have to address this. As for the number impacted, 12% of the STRs have above, an occupancy above 12. It's not that many. I don't know how many are in residential districts. I believe many are in the planned unit developments, which go directly to my question about R2 and RM1 having a different cap. As for the Roby report, it's mentioned time and time again. Unfortunately, you're forgetting some of the estimates that were made. The estimates on economic impact are for the zip code of 49090. According to the 2020 census, the number of housing was 8,777 in the 49090. Per our January 21st, well, no, per the census report for the city of South Haven, we have 3,560 units. That is only 40%. As for population, for the 49090, according to the census, 13,286. Last I knew, we had under 4,000. The study provides estimates of impacts and estimates throughout. And I believe the estimates are skewed. At this point in time, I am very disappointed where we are at because we were clear last year that we wanted a cap of 12, especially in our residential districts. And I do not appreciate a suggestion at the 11th hour tonight for that. What I had provided was two per compliant bedroom, up to two per floor as long as they have a bed to sleep in. And as for basements and attics, they need to be compliant bedrooms to have sleeping. Or an attic would be potentially one floor, and it would qualify for two, assuming there's proper egress. As for enforcement, I have yet to hear an answer of how two different ordinances are going to be enforced simultaneously, consistently. And a very simple concern for supporting that request is there is one short-term rental owner who has two short-term rental applications pending since 2023. According to online reports, they rented in 2024 without having paid an annual inspection. And I'm waiting to see what happens in 2025. And there's an outstanding application that was supposedly filed in 2022 with a fee paid in '23 and hasn't had anything issued. And all three of those are on hold since 2023. So I would like to know how this is going to be enforced when these simple things appear to go on hold for more than a year? And how are we going to ensure these commercial uses in our residential districts are commensurate with residential use?
I want to thank all of you for coming here tonight and speaking. Even if you felt you were repeating what other people said, it's good for us to have those points driven into our brains. So I know so many of you don't often have the time to be here, or you're out of town and you can't make it, or the weather's bad. But I really value what you said tonight, and I'm glad that you're here. I know we're not going to make a decision tonight because we just heard so much from all of you. And we're going to take time to think about that and come up with common ground. So just if you've never met me before, I live in a short-term rental neighborhood. I live right across from the American Legion. And my husband and I could not be happier. We know all our neighbors. When we walk around the block on both sides of the street, and Emily is one of my neighbors. And so, and my two sons paid for their college by mowing lawns of short-term rentals. They did that for 12 years. And my daughter, Baby, sat in the summer when people came and rented big houses on the north side. So Aaron Cobb said a couple of weeks ago, he reminded us that short-term rentals are part of our economic engine. And I've seen that in my own family. So I want to thank all of you, and we're going to move on.
If I may, so we kind of started this conversation about the proposal from Attorney Eberly on a possible change to the max occupants. I've been kind of trying to keep tally here. I've seen George and Jeff might be open to kind of going with what has been done, but I got pretty firm no's and looking for a cap of 12, no more than 12, from Wendy, Latisha, Mary, and possibly Joe. So I just wanted to kind of make sure that that's what I'm understanding because we'd like to make sure that what we bring back at our next meeting kind of confirms with that understanding. Is that correct? Do I, did I?
I support flexibility. Like I had asked before if, you know, we've talked about that some of the people who own short-term rentals might need some flexibility with their numbers. And I asked if that could be grandfathered in. So I am in favor of more flexibility.
Can I add one little thing?
Sure.
Thanks.
I just want to clarify, I feel I am where I am tonight because of what the attorney brought to us, raising questions. And that's why I'm not ready to move forward with this.
And Kate, no, you did not get mine right. Because as I've said, I'm still waiting to hear from the attorney about having flexibility for R2 and RM1 that affects mainly the planned unit developments. And I'm, so that's.
My recommendation consistently has been that I recommend not linking your occupancy to a zoning district within your regulatory ordinance.
Thank you.
I know, but how do we do flexibility when our current ordinance did just that?
I think, as I proposed earlier, I think there's a way to be flexible and recognize the fact, to the extent the desired flexibility is to recognize the fact that some people have been renting at an occupancy higher than 12 and balancing that with the desire moving forward to have any new short-term rental that comes online be limited to 12, or anybody that was previously limited to 12 stay at 12. I think an option for getting there is to say your maximum occupancy may not exceed the number of occupants permitted for all bedrooms within the dwellings plus two per finished floor, what the finished language, provided there's adequate egress and sleeping, subject to a cap of 12, provided that a short-term rental that had previously been authorized a higher maximum occupancy will use that number as their maximum occupancy. Now, you still have, you can still only put the number of people in a room that's compliant with the 50 square feet or whatever it is, but that at least gives these people, these short-term rentals who have had a cap, that have been used to a cap more than 12, to be able to do that, subject to the health, safety, and welfare requirements that have been refined in this draft in terms of egress, square footage, and things like that. So it's different than what has been done before. There may be some folks who had a short-term rental, that was at 16, but they were putting four bunks in a 100-square-foot bedroom, and they're not able to do that anymore. That's a trade-off, but the compromise is a recognition of if you meet all these health, safety, welfare requirements, and you had been at a cap up to 16, we're going to let you keep doing that. Now, moving forward, anybody who's new, hadn't been registered before, would be subject to that 12, for the reasons that many council members expressed the justification for.
Thank you.
I think that gives you some flexibility.
Thank you. We're going to move on to city manager comments. Or what?
No, I think that, I think that kind of gets us at least somewhere. Joe, I'm going to kind of put you in the kind of flexibility, but not sure just yet based on the comments. So we'll kind of refine this and bring this back.
So let me speak.
Sure.
For myself, because I'm giving mixed signals. I absolutely believe in the two per bedroom, two per finished floor, maximum of 12. In business, I've always learned you try to find a middle ground. You try to find flexibility. But tonight, as Mary outlined beautifully, there's too many intangibles, too many moving parts here that I can't say that you're showing me a road to flexibility. So maybe, sorry, you want to put it in writing, we can all look at it. But as of right now, I don't feel comfortable saying I'm even flexible because I still don't see the path to allowing changes. So I'll stick with the 2, 2, 2, two per floor, two per bedroom, max of 12, until I see something in writing better. I think that's fair.
Okay.
Do you have what you need?
I think so.
Okay, can we move on?
Do we need to table 12B?
Actually.
No, we closed the public hearing. We closed the public hearing, so at this point, we.
I think you could go ahead and table it.
I move to. I make a motion to postpone item 12B.
Well. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion, so postpone, do we have a specific date?
The impression is to bring this back at our next meeting. Yes. Which would be 3/17.
So my biggest concern is we set this public hearing for two weeks and were, the term that a lot of people like, blindsided when it came out Friday, without any notice. And I just, it's not efficient use of our time and, or our residents' time when we're constantly changing.
Is there an objection for us bringing this back on 3/17?
I guess it depends on what it is, and yeah.
Does this council want to see a revised draft at 3/17?
Yes, please.
Let's do a roll call vote on bringing it back.
Well, I think right now, there's just a motion to postpone.
Yeah.
And I think maybe.
Until March 17th.
No, it didn't have a date.
Okay, is there a motion?
You want to amend your motion, Joe.
Is there a motion to postpone until a certain date?
There's a motion on the table that we either amend or vote down.
There wasn't a motion to amend, but I will amend my motion to postpone this until 3/17.
Second?
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Of course.
This is to, the motion is to postpone this until the March 17th meeting.
Correct. Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, and now it is time for city managers' comments. It's not.
Public comment, an item's not on the agenda.
Oh, I am so sorry. It's time for public comment. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. So no STRs, and you have three minutes.
It won't take me that long. Cindy Compton, 11340, 76th Street. I'm going to just throw out there affordable housing. People want affordable housing.
Yes, you can talk about that.
Right, that's what, and I just want to throw out there, and I mentioned this to a couple of you in the past. You need to take a look at the impact fees. The sewer and water connection fees, I'm just looking at those. There are also fees for getting your electrical service. But I've done some real estate development, and at the end, you know, my heart was in it because it's in my community, trying to make it affordable. And the, the quick, like when we built Osage Orchard, now it's 20 years ago, it seems like just yesterday, at the beginning of the project with our developer discount, connection fees were $3,500. By the time the last home was sold, they were over $12,000. I have a friend right now that split off a lot, and he has a 1,200-square-foot, it's in the township, but still impacted by the fees, and it's part of our housing stock. He has a 1,200-square-foot garage that he's planning on converting into a residential unit. It'll be permitted. The connection fees that I just got on his behalf, because he's out of town right now, $25,000. because he's out of town right now, $25,000. And that's a half, 1,200 square foot on a quarter of an acre. And that doesn't include the cost that he's going to have to pay to get the water and sewer leads to his property line so he can install it. So that's not any installation, and that's a huge impact. It's, there are a few other projects that had gone belly up, and I couldn't, I was trying to get a developer interested in those.
You have one minute.
And they, they walked away from it because of those connection fees.
Thank you.
Yep.
Could we please have the audience be quiet when people are talking? It's distracting.
Sean McKee, 429 Superior Street. I would like to second the mention about the privilege rights fees, I believe is what they were called. When we built, I think we paid $22,000. What was it, nine years ago, nine years ago? Just a comparison to Jordan's house that is considered affordable at this point, that'd be about 12 and a half percent of a total build cost. And we all know that you can't build a house for $175,000 these, these days, no matter what, what the size, unless it's going to be a 200s, 300-square-foot home. But I would like to actually bring up another issue. I would like to ask the city to continue to try to look at opportunities to bring in corporations and businesses into this town so that we can have careers, not just jobs, but careers where people can have jobs once they graduate high school, go to college and come back, that they want to come back to. If we put a little bit more effort into that, if we put half the amount of effort into that that we have into the STR stuff, we probably, over the course of the last eight years, would have had at least three or four corporations here in town by now if we put half that effort in that we have into the STR. And that never gets brought up. The reason that we don't have neighbors in this town is not because of STRs and not because people can't move back. It's because there aren't any jobs here. That's the number-one reason that people do not live here year-round. It's because you can't find a job here. And it's not because you can't find a job here to afford a house here. Houses cost as much everywhere around the state, around the nation. Houses are big. Every, every lot that you see being built across the nation, they're not little teeny two-bedroom ranches anymore. They're two stories everywhere.
You have one minute.
The issue is not that you, not having neighbors is not because you don't have people that want to live here or can't afford to live here. It's that there's no jobs to be able to even think about affording to live here or having the, the life, having a lifestyle. My wife commutes two hours a day for her job. I commuted two hours a day. Thankfully, my company switched to allow me to work from home. So I'm here every day now. That's awesome. I love it. So if we would put a little more effort into getting jobs here, careers here, bring companies in to fill the empty areas in town that could hold companies, jobs, factories, whatever, let's think about that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
I'm Catherine Soder, 222 Brockway Avenue. I just wanted to bring up three things. Battle Creek Schools puts together a package for anybody, any teachers or any school employees. If they want to, if they're wanting to be a teacher in that school system, they get $10,000 toward purchasing a home in Battle Creek. And so if we could partner somehow or couple that with the new first-time homebuyer thing that Michigan is working on, $10,000 for low income, that would be an amazing package that we could do here in South Haven. And $20,000 down would be making houses that exist on the other side of Broadway or, you know, within like six blocks away from the beach affordable. The other thing I'd like to see is more monitoring the speed limit, like someone else mentioned, like Bangor, you know. You drive in Bangor, you drive the speed limit. You don't drive five over because you're going to get pulled over. So even if we could have on Phoenix, like, those little monitors, like where it flashes the police lights, like, when you're speeding, and maybe a few people need to get pulled over. But I'd really like to see that speed limit enforced because especially when our population balloons in the summer, so many day trippers come from Kalamazoo as well. I want us to have them be safe on our streets. And then the other thing I'd like you to look into is some kind of additional parking, structure-wise, somewhere. Even if it's just a little bit outside of downtown, people would be willing to walk, they just want to be able to park. They want to be able to enjoy the town. And if they can have easier access to parking, more people would be visiting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Green, 408 Eagle Street, Shores. Vacation rentals? I'm going to piggyback off a couple of these things and what I said earlier to you, Councilman Wilkins. We have an idea on how to grow our communities here. And we're inviting you guys right now openly. In two weeks, we'll send out an invitation to all of you to come and listen. And right here on the Michigan Opens, uh, Meetings Act, it states that you guys can come all together to an educational session and just listen to what we have to, to preach. Last time I asked you guys, several of you said, oh, can't. Open Meetings Act opens meeting action. You didn't even want to listen. So here publicly, I'm inviting you tonight and come, come and just listen to how we can grow a couple neighborhoods. It is not about the $200,000 home. The millennials that you want here to seed, they do want these little mini homes. They want something smaller. They want something that's more green and more energy-efficient. Luckily, one of my college fraternity brothers works for the Department of Interior until maybe his job gets cut right now. But he works with everything that goes green in a mini home. He can hook this little city up. He's already said he could. So again, you're the first person I'll be inviting because you've asked me to put my money where my mouth is. So come and listen. We want to grow. Shores understands that we have an obligation to this city. But so do you guys. You have the obligation to come and at least listen. Will this work? Can this work? How do we rezone? How do we make this happen? How do we cut the water and sewer fees down to make it affordable for younger families? Well, we have ideas. I invite all of you to listen now.
Thank you.
Robert Holmes, again, 294 Park Avenue. Since I'm here, I want to take the opportunity to address an item in another meeting that was done. There was a particular homeowner that was trying to build a two-story house with storage in his attic. And because of the language in the ordinance, zoning had to deny his, his two-story building with storage in the attic. He also wanted a deck, but I'm not, that's another story. It didn't seem like that was a problem. But I was wondering if there was any possibility of being able to add the term in the glossary of what an attic is and that, whether or not an attic equals a third story. I felt pretty bad for this gentleman. So did the Zoning Board of Appeals in a way because there wasn't a way for this to be done within the ordinance. He was under his 35, 35 feet in height, but he was using his attic, as we would know it may be a bonus room area, to do some storage and get access to a deck. So I don't know if there's any ability to be able to put that glossary word in there for attic. And I know that we talked about attic in the STRs. So it was kind of funny to hear that term thrown around when I don't believe that term has been defined. And Kelly knows a lot about it, and I think she was in kind of a tough position because people really, you know, wanted, could understand the use of it, but it just wasn't allowed, and so it had to be denied of his building permit. But I'm sure he's going to redesign something in some way. But if there's any way of adding that, or, I don't know, Kelly can speak to it better than I can.
After the meeting, you can talk to Kelly.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments or closing remarks?
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street.
Can you put the microphone a little bit closer?
Yeah. I struggled with coming back to address an issue, but I got some texts because from several individuals wanted me to make a quick comment on 2020, 2025. To hear someone reflect on the area that we lived in as being the zone was not only offensive to me, but offensive to others that were watching. It should not be allowed to be used in this type of environment or anywhere else. Zone comes with so much stereotype and labeling. The late Bishop Cunningham, F.L. Cunningham, came down here with a group of us, and we fought to get that stigma off our area. And we received a proclamation from, I believe, Mayor, I believe her name was Booker at the time. We received a proclamation renaming that area as the Pleasant View Estate. That's the area of South Side, Ward One, where most African-Americans grew up. But to hear somebody reflect on our area as the zone with all the stereotype that came along with being labeled as a zone is heartening, sickening, sad. And I don't think Ms. Wilkins, myself, or anyone else should be subject to that type of language. We are taxpayers. We love this city just as much as anybody else. I've coached. I've worked with kids from all different ethnicity. I've given my time, sweat.
Give one minute.
Money to support people in this area. And to have someone stand up here and reflect on our area and suggest that we can't afford anything in this city is unacceptable and should have been frowned upon by all of you that heard that statement. I don't like it, this bullying, Facebook tactic. It's just festing in this area, and South Haven is better than that. I think we're better together. And I don't like it. I don't expect to hear it anymore, especially for reasonable-thinking adults.
Thank you. Any more comments? If not, we're going to move on. Finally, city manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep these brief. We've got a number of notices that are up on the city's website, most primarily affecting the Third Ward. We will be having the bridge go down for intermittent maintenance starting tomorrow, so starting from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., the bridge will be in the up position, so pedestrians and vehicular traffic will not be able to go across. This is part of our annual work that we do on the bridge. This is to do maintenance to reinforce the underwater structures with riprap. So that'll be occurring Monday through Friday. It is expected to be in the down position on the weekends, but that will be lasting until at least April 4th. So do plan to use Baseline Road to reroute. I did also hear a lot of the comments about speeding on, on Phoenix Street. We do get a lot of comments about speeding on Baseline Road, on South Haven Street, on Indiana, on Kalamazoo. So we do try to move our, our speed trail around to address some of that. We do know that we've got some folks who may have a heavy, heavy foot in town, and we do try to address those. So please understand, we will try to continue to address those. The 2024, I'm sorry, 2025 Board of Review is occurring. They have their organizational meeting. They will be having the organizational meeting tomorrow. If you're looking to be part of the Board of Review and would like to attend, you can sign up for an appointment for Tuesday, March 11th, or Thursday, March 13th. And then lastly, we, this was our last weekend for the skate rink, and we have had lots of folks come out for that last weekend, but it is all done for, for the season, and we'll be tearing that down as we can. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Letitia.
Thank you all for coming, and we heard everything you said.
That's it? That's it. George?
I also want to thank everyone for coming and for everyone that watched online. We got some good feedback today. I think we're close, and I feel like there may be a light at the end of the tunnel on this effort. That's it.
Thank you. Joe?
I'm not going to say anything about short-term rentals. I think we've heard enough tonight. So I'm going to change it to something very positive. I want to thank all the people in this town that gave money to We Care, myself, and I saw Kate. Mary was there. We all stood at the circle with our little buckets and trying to collect money. I was amazed by the generosity of people. Even some didn't even know what we were collecting money for, and they came up, opened their car windows and gave a lot of money. And it's just very heartening. The second thing, I'll just touch on it. Bishop Wilkins, we know each other. The comment from the one person about the zone is not reflective of this city council, and I don't think it's reflective of this town. And I've been on city council seven years, and I heard a comment one time that I was speechless by resign when we were talking about Overton, and I will never repeat it. But those, those kind of statements are not reflective. We have good people here, and I'm sorry you had to hear that, you and Letitia. But I know we're better than that, and that, again, is not the kind of community we are. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes, um, just one thing. Kate, I was going to say this during your part, but came right to us. So I know that the litigation attorney position has been posted. It's closed March 14th. And because the litigation council is the, really the crux, the enforcement arm of legal, making sure our policies are enforced, I am looking forward to be, the city council being involved in that selection process with the charter, having them, having legal counsel directly responsible to us. I do want to thank everyone for coming out. I am sorry people felt their time was cut. I knew that we were not at a position to vote. I, we received many, many communications. I, I saw a common theme. In fact, many were very similarly written letters, and it had already been taken into account over the weekend. And we are just trying to get this through. I certainly hope this second attempt will get us further. Regarding the attic, that had already been noted by ZBA. I anticipate the Planning Commission taking that up. I think that's being addressed. And as part of that, I certainly hope we discuss viewing platforms out of an attic because that is a bird's-eye view right into your neighbor's yard and just trying to preserve the character of our neighborhoods. This coming Thursday, Planning Commission is meeting, and we'll be discussing the short-term rental zoning ordinance and also the sign ordinance. And I also echo Councilman Reese's comments with regard to the support for We Care. I know my husband and I supported it personally. And also the comments at the podium that were not as respectful as they could have been.
Wendy?
Oh, I'll start with also the comment period. We've been here since 5:00, and I understand this is a hot-button issue for a lot of people. We hear what you say, but it's 10:30. We're, I can say pretty surely we're not going to do our best work. If we have something important to vote on, and we've already been here for five hours, it's, I, I feel like shortening the comment period is one way that we can get through what we need to get through in a good fashion and be at our best. So that's where I stand on that. I also didn't address this at the time, but with the hotline, I know that came up a few times with the data provided. I don't call the hotline when my STR neighbors have various issues. I don't think a lot of us use it for that, and I can't speak to everyone. But I don't think that using that data is a perfect outlook of problems the neighbors have with- think that using that data is a perfect outlook of problems that neighbors have with their short-term rentals in their neighborhoods, so I just wanted to clarify. I've had issues, I do not call the hotline. And also, Phoenix Street, I live right off of Phoenix Street, and I can say there have been a lot of flashing sirens, people getting pulled over, probably for speeding, so that issue seems to be getting addressed. And, yeah, also, the Ward One comment, I did not like hearing people refer to certain neighborhoods in a derogatory way, I think that we are better if this person did that not knowing better, I hope that they do know better now, and will do better. And those are my comments for today.
My comments, we got a lot of emails the last couple of days, thank you for all the emails, I did read all the emails, but didn't, they were coming so fast, I didn't have time to respond to them all. Thanks to everyone that came today and spoke today. I always, they always say, "Public speaking is so hard," but you guys are so good at it, I keep talking about that, I wish, come talk to my students, make them better public speakers. Yeah, the sad comment about Ward One, I think we've commented on that, that was very disappointing. And putting that aside, this is South Haven, we are friendly and we are nice, from Mr. Wall. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I wanted to congratulate Lanique Cunningham, who scored 1,001 points on our Rams Varsity Girls Basketball Team. And she's a sophomore, so if you don't know Lanique, you still have two more years to get to the bleachers and cheer for her. Also, congratulations to our 7th and 8th grade choir on their performance last week at the District 6 Choral Festival. The choir received an overall Division I excellent rating, which qualifies them to move on to the State Choral Festival in May. And finally, happy birthday tomorrow to our zoning administrator, Kelly DeSette. We are so grateful for your expertise, knowledge, and professionalism, and we are so lucky to have you on our staff, so have a great birthday tomorrow. And if there's no further business, we're adjourned.